Okay, we're going to start the workshop portion of our meeting, which will take us to 7:30, at which point we'll review our regular agenda. For workshop, we thought we'd revisit one of our favorite subjects, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, otherwise fondly known as SECR. It's always good, we do a primer on this probably, what, once a year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it seems timely. Because I'm sure every single one of us remembers all of the ins and outs and details of SECR.
There'll be a quiz at the beginning and at the end.
And at the end. So, without further ado.
All right, so I apologize, I'll circulate the PowerPoint to everybody after the meeting, but I was having some technical issues with connecting. So, you'll just have to hear me talk without any visuals, so sorry for that. So, we're here to talk about SECR. We're just going to go over the basics. We only have, obviously, 25 minutes or so. I could probably do a presentation for like four hours on SECR, but you don't want to hear that. Interestingly enough, this year is the 50th anniversary of SECR, of when the state legislature adopted Article 8 of the environmental conservation law. So, this is a big year for SECR nerds like me.
What are you going to do to celebrate?
Actually, there's a conference that's being put together up in Albany.
Fantastic.
Sounds right.
That's pretty awesome.
So, all the SECR nerds will get together and talk about it. All right, so we're going to go over some basics. What is SECR? Why do we use it? And how do we use it? As I mentioned, it was initially adopted back in 1975. It's our 50th anniversary. And SECR requires all state and local agencies to assess the environmental effects of discretionary actions, so actions that, you know, involve some sort of discretion in approving before deciding to fund or approve that action. That is, unless the action is exempt from SECR. So, there are certain types of projects that are exempt, and we'll talk about that. The purpose of SECR when applied, so first of all, we're supposed to incorporate consideration of environmental factors into your application review at the earliest time possible, and this is done in a couple different ways. First, you identify the environmental impacts and determine whether the application needs to be modified to avoid or mitigate those impacts. When applied effectively and as intended, SECR is really meant to be a tool for infusing environmental considerations into your decision-making to result in a, you know, better, more sustainable, and less impactful project. It also helps to identify the relevant area of concern so the project can be revised to address that concern. What's also important is that environmental factors need to be balanced with social and economic factors. So, SECR is not just about, you know, the birds and the bunnies and the bees, right? It's about social and economic issues as well. In fact, environment is defined in SECR to include social and economic factors. So, when we are talking about SECR, it's important to also remember that it's not the intent -- oh, sorry, I'm just flipping through my notes here a little bit too fast. It's not the intent that environmental factors are the sole consideration in reviewing an action. Courts have held that SECR is governed by a rule of reason, and that is balancing those environmental, social, and economic factors. So, you may have a project that may have, you know, some direct wetland impacts, but the project provides a substantial amount of affordable housing, or the project will provide a fair number of jobs in an area that is really starving for jobs. So, all of that gets balanced in your SECR review. Courts have also said that the lead agency doesn't need to investigate every single conceivable environmental problem. You use that rule of reason and your discretion to select which environmental issues are the ones that are relevant and the ones that need to be looked at. So, when we're talking about compliance with SECR, we're talking about two buckets of things. We've got procedural compliance, and we have substantive compliance. And procedural compliance, their strict compliance is required. So, an example of that is for some of your larger projects that are classified as Type 1, and we'll get into the nuts and bolts of what a Type 1 action is versus a Type 2 or an unlisted. But suffice it to say for now, Type 1 projects are the larger projects. You have a requirement in SECR that a full environmental assessment form, so the longer environmental assessment form, needs to be used for a Type 1 action. If a short form is used, courts have invalidated that SECR determination on that basis alone. So, strict compliance with the procedural requirements is definitely important. And that's part of what, you know, I'm here, and Natalie's here, and John's here to help make sure that all of those requirements are met. For substantive compliance, that's where you're talking about whether you took a quote-unquote "hard look." The cases talk about a hard look at the relevant environmental impacts. And this goes to the importance of creating a good record, which is, you know, the documents that are before you and the discussion that you have on every project, and we'll go into that a little bit more in a minute. So, courts are going to look to see whether you've, in doing your hard look, whether you've identified the relevant areas of environmental concern. So, what's relevant? Is it wetland impacts? Is it traffic? Is it steep slopes? Is it stormwater? That you took a hard look at those impacts that you've identified as relevant, and courts have defined hard look as a thorough investigation of the problems involved. So, basically, not a rubber stamp. And analyze how the project is proposing to address that impact. Is that impact being avoided by the project? Is there something that's being done to minimize the impact on that particular resource? Or are there mitigation measures that the applicant is proposing? And once you've done all that, then you make your determination, your SECR determination, and that is your analysis of whether there may be one or more significant adverse environmental impacts. If you find that there may be one or more significant adverse environmental impacts, that triggers a requirement for an environmental impact statement. That's a positive declaration. Otherwise, if you conclude that there are no significant environmental impacts because of what the applicant has proposed to address those various items of concern, you want to make sure that you're documenting that in what they call reasoned elaboration under SECR. State for the record why there will be no significant adverse environmental impact, and cite to documents in the record. So, you know, for example, an applicant might have, you know, direct wetland impacts, but perhaps they're doing a one-to-one wetland restoration. So, they're, for the amount of square footage of wetlands that they're going to be disturbing, they're actually creating one-to-one, a whole other pocket of wetlands somewhere else. Maybe the applicant has prepared a robust mitigation plan that improves the remaining wetland buffer. Or maybe it's just not a very functional wetland, and it's something that you don't consider to be particularly impactful, that the wetland is being disturbed. So, you want to state all that for the record in writing. And that's the documents that are provided to you based on your discussion. So, for example, we have on our agenda tonight a proposed negative declaration. And you'll see, you've got the narrative that goes through each of the impact categories under SECR to describe, based on the records that are before you for that application, and based on the discussion that we've had, why there's no significant adverse environmental impact. Yes, Mr. Gutt?
Just two quick questions.
Yeah.
You mentioned the distinction between Type 1 and Type 2.
Yeah.
Just explain unlisted real quickly.
Sure.
Unless you were going to get to that later.
Yeah, yeah, there'll be a slide on that, but I'll touch on it quickly now. So, unlisted is literally just that. In SECR, they don't list the particular category of the proposed action that's before you. So, for example, a Type 1 action is, one of the things is a disturbance of 10 acres or more. So, if you have a disturbance of 10 acres or more, that's automatically classified as a Type 1. You've got to use the full environmental assessment form, and there's other procedural requirements that go along with that. Type 2 are things like the construction of a single-family home or a two-family home, completely exempt from SECR. You don't have to apply SECR whatsoever. Unlisted is a project that doesn't fall within any of the listed Type 1 categories, doesn't fall within any of the listed Type 2 categories. It's just, it's not addressed in either of those lists, so it's unlisted. A subdivision is an unlisted action, so that's not addressed in either Type 1 or Type 2.
The other question I had is that you refer to courts often, and thankfully, we haven't had to experience that at all here, at least in my experience. But what would precipitate a court action? Like, who typically would bring? Would it be a municipality? Would it be an applicant?
Typically, it, well, it would be an applicant if a project was denied.
Yeah.
If an applicant's project was denied, they could challenge that denial through what's called an Article 78 proceeding. And when that kind of proceeding is filed, first of all, there's a very short statute of limitations. It's only 30 days from when the decision is filed in the city clerk's office. And secondly, the court's review is limited to whatever was before your board when you made your decision. So, as part of that proceeding, on behalf of the board, we would prepare the certified record. So, it's now all electronic, but, you know, in the olden days, I guess we'll call it.
Pound of paper.
We used to prepare, you know, loose-leaf binders, volumes of binders of material that would get submitted to the court. That was all of the applicant submissions, staff memos, minutes from the meetings, agendas, public notice, documents.
Yes.
Public comment is a very important part of it. So, all that gets submitted to the court, and the court is looking at that and determining, did the board have a rational basis for its decision? As long as there's a basis for your decision in the record, more often than not, the courts will uphold your decision.
Yeah.
Because they really defer to the local expertise of the boards. But that gets to exactly what I was going to talk about next, which was the importance of creating that record, so.
That segue, right.
You got me. So, you really want to make sure that we're discussing all of the relevant aspects of a project. I think this board, more than a lot of other boards that I appear before and that I represent, you guys actually, you really do a good job of talking about all the issues and going through, listening to public comment, and addressing all of the issues that come up. So, that is a good thing. One other point on information in the record. There is a distinction between expert testimony and lay testimony. And what I mean by that is, the perfect example is traffic. That's always what comes up, right? We have more, very often, traffic studies that are prepared by a professional traffic engineer, submitted to your board for review. In the absence of a professional opinion to the contrary, the courts will look at that professional opinion as sort of trumping any lay opinion on traffic. And, you know, this applies to any subject matter, but professional opinions will, more often than not, trump lay opinions. Now, we have our own traffic consultant, you know, that advises the board. So, if you have two competing professional opinions, and that could be the applicant's opinion versus your consultant's opinion or a member of the public who retains a traffic engineer and submits a study, if there is a difference of opinion there, you are the one, you basically sit as the court. You are the ones that get to review those and determine which you find to be more reasonable or more credible. And like I said, more often than not, a court will not second-guess your assessment of that as long as there's a rational basis in the record. I want to, being mindful of time, I want to move forward to just sort of like the nuts and bolts of the procedure of SECR. So, we talked a little bit about classifying the proposed action. That's the first step. So, when we first get the application, we look at it and determine, is it Type 1? Is it Type 2? Or is it unlisted? Because that charts the path for how we're going to review the rest of the project. Because if it's Type 2, we can put SECR aside and just focus on your code requirements. If it's Type 1, we're checking, did the applicant submit the full expanded environmental assessment form? And that's the form that you see with the application documents, where the applicant fills it out and includes all the, sort of the pedigree information about the property and about the project. And then we talked about unlisted. The next step is determining whether you're going to serve as lead agency. And we do this for most of the applications that involve SECR. Lead agency is the one that's responsible for undertaking the environmental review of the whole project. So, you are eligible to be a lead agency if you have some type of approval authority over the project. So, you may have a project where you guys have site plan authority. There's a New York State DOT highway work permit that's required. DEC has to sign off on the SWIP. You know, there's a number of agencies. Maybe there's a variance involved, and the ZBA has an approval authority over the project. Any one of those agencies, including you, could be the lead. More often than not, it makes sense for the planning board to be the lead agency, but you don't have to be.
I don't think I've ever seen another agency
Yeah.
say, "No, we want to be lead" Once we've issued notice of intent.
Right. And that does happen, that does happen sometimes. It's rare.
Yeah.
And when there's a battle, the DEC commissioner decides who's going to be lead. Right. Bigger, regional projects, usually, a lot of times you have DEC serving as lead agency. Yeah. Yes. One important thing to remember there, when we do, when we don't have a lead agency, and we do a --
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
I just heard that one.
Okay.
I don't think David's, David Jensen's.
God, I thought it was me. Where we don't have a lead agency, you don't have to have a lead agency. You can do an uncoordinated review, which means there's no lead agency, and each of the involved agencies are responsible for doing the environmental review. However, the trick there is each of those agencies is responsible for doing an environmental review of the whole project, not just the portion of the project that's within their jurisdiction. So, you could have, say like, say for, and I don't want to use an example of, let's use Edgewater, right? I was going to use a project on our agenda tonight, but let's use Edgewater. You know, a very large project. If we did an uncoordinated review, then each of the agencies, so the zoning board, I think there were variances granted there. The zoning board would have to do the same level of environmental review that you guys do, even though they might just be issuing one setback variance. So, I typically recommend that we do a coordinated review for that reason. Next step is determining significance. That's your positive declaration or your negative declaration, which we talked about. A positive declaration is where you find there may be one or more significant adverse environmental impacts. Negative being there are no significant environmental impacts.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
With a positive finding, then what are, like, what are the avenues open to the applicant? Like, are you dead in the water, or?
You're not dead in the water, but you are preparing an environmental impact statement, which can tack on a good year or so to your review process.
And part of that requires that remediation become a part of their resubmission if they want to continue the review, right? To the point where, right?
So.
Mitigation, I should say.
Mitigation, right. So, what would happen is, first, you would undertake scoping, and scoping is where you figure out, okay, what's like the table of contents for this environmental impact statement? What are the relevant areas of environmental concern that the applicant is going to have to study? Then the applicant would go back and prepare the draft environmental impact statement, which analyzes each of those relevant areas of environmental concern. So, there might be a traffic chapter, there might be a stormwater chapter, et cetera. As part of that, they would identify the mitigation measures that they're proposing to address that impact. Then it goes to public hearing. Once that draft environmental impact statement is determined to be complete, and being complete means the applicant has addressed all the items in the table of contents that we created in the scoping. After a public hearing, the applicant then prepares the final environmental impact statement, the FEIS. That's the document where the applicant's required to respond to all of the substantive comments received on the draft. So, everything from the public hearing, all of the written comment memos from other agencies, every single issue gets responded to. And a lot of times, there are changes to the project that occur as a result of that project, that process. One of the important parts about an environmental impact statement is it has to include alternatives, a range of reasonable alternatives that are feasible for the applicant to pursue. So, that could be, you know, a less dense project. If an applicant is proposing multiple apartment buildings, maybe it's, you know, putting all those units into one building and preserving open space, but maybe you have a taller building, things like that. And then at the end of the process, once the FEIS is found to be adequate and accurate and is accepted by the lead agency, the last piece of SECR after you've issued a positive declaration is a finding statement. That's sort of the capstone to the whole process. And that's where you provide your rationale for which of the alternatives that were studied in the environmental impact statement is the one that minimizes, avoids, and mitigates the identified impacts to the maximum extent practicable.
Jennifer, can we jump back?
Yeah.
I think there's one key point that I see planning boards often kind of struggle to wrap their heads around, and it's the word substantial, right? Before we get to the POS deck, right? If you're at that point where you're making a decision whether a project should be a negative declaration or a positive declaration,
Yeah.
you have to deem whether the impacts are substantial and adverse. And I feel like that substantial question is one of the areas where there's discretion or a lot of reasoning that needs to go into that. And I feel like that's where sometimes either public or applicants or planning board members maybe struggle, right? With like classifying whether something is substantial or not substantial.
Right. And that's, it's a tricky question, because like, what's significant in Beacon? It's not going to be significant in Buffalo. Like, it changes. What is significant?
Or in like an urban setting versus like a rural setting, you know?
Versus rural, exactly. It's really specific to the context of even, not only the community, but also where the project is within the community and what the project is.
Can I just ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Point? Because it always seems to come up around traffic, where there's like that kind of hard, fast number of 100 trips, like, or, you know, that make it impactful. But it seems like it doesn't take context into account at all. And I'm wondering if there's any mechanism by which to apply context.
Yeah. So, that 100 trip sort of threshold is, I think, from, I think it's DOT guidance. It's a guidance document, either by DEC or DOT, where they've set that threshold as typically, if you have less than 100 trips being added to an intersection, that's not going to rise to the level of being a significant impact. That's, that might not necessarily be the case in every instance, but that's sort of just a general guideline, a general threshold, sort of a benchmark to use.
Sorry, I've heard this, 100 trips before, but it's just striking me. Within what time period?
You typically look at the peak AM and the peak PM.
That's what I thought.
The peak periods. And there's additional information within the SECR regs about how to determine significance. There's a whole, I think it's 617.7 that lists, I mean, there's a whole enumerated list for what to think about and what to consider when you're trying to figure out, is something significant or not? But you're going to want to look at like the magnitude and the importance, you know, how big of a geographic scope, the impact.
I have a quick question before time runs out.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah.
You mentioned before that environment is defined very broadly. So, I did a quick search on what might be considered an environment under SECR. And they list aesthetic significance and community character. Are those considered environments under SECR? And do we have authority under community character to put something into the positive side of SECR?
So, yeah, community character is something that is sort of one of the buckets of things that's reviewed under SECR. So, if you look at the environmental assessment form, on the long form, the full form, Part 2, you'll have, there's a list of like 13 or 14 different categories of things that we'll look at under SECR. Aesthetic impacts is one. Community character is another. Community character typically speaks to, does the project comply with the city's, you know, comprehensive plan and other, like, you know, planning objectives?
When that's not clearly defined, and something's brought to us, that is more of a, I don't know, we've got to make a decision about that. What happens there if it seems like it might meet city standards, but the community does not think it belongs?
So, community opposition is not a basis for your decision-making.
Got it.
Yeah. Just, if it complies with the, if you've determined it complies with a comprehensive plan and meets those objectives, just because there's community opposition to it would not be a proper basis for making any determination, whether it's a SECR determination or.
The comprehensive plan uses words like aesthetic and character inside of its definitions?
I'm sorry.
The comprehensive plan uses aesthetic and character inside of its definitions?
The comprehensive plan does.
If you review the comprehensive plan, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have it in my head, I will find words like "character" or "aesthetic" in which to refer to.
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, community opposition is not a basis for decision-making.
Yeah, what I was, what I was just going to say is that it's an improper basis for decision-making. However, facts relayed by members of the community are a proper basis for decision-making.
Correct.
And this is for an environmental impact statement.
Or for.
Specifically.
For literally any decision you make.
Literally, yeah, okay. That's, I just want to click it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the frustration I find, what you described, Jim, is that it meets the code, it complies with the comprehensive plan, but it's friggin' ugly. What do you do?
Well. I guess the word is, because we could find, we could say there's an impact to traffic or air or land, right? But the only way to find out there's an impact to the character or the aesthetics of the city is by reviewing the comprehensive plan. And if the comprehensive plan doesn't take into account better aesthetics or better character, then there's nothing we can do if something's brought before the board that we don't agree with.
I want to say yes, but that seems very black and white.
Don't we, we also often.
You really need to rely on the comprehensive plan for.
We also have more regs than just the kind of comprehensive plan for determining design standards and.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Your code has.
We have code with explicit standards language that we can, that's a better basis than, the comprehensive plan is a guideline document. It's actually, it doesn't have the force of law.
Correct.
It's something we reference constantly, because we did a great job of getting community input, and it's very strongly supported here.
We did, didn't we?
We did. That was a good job.
And aesthetic issues, the important thing to remember there is that it's, the relevant viewpoint is from publicly accessible places. So, viewpoints from private property are not within your purview.
That's important.
For SECR or otherwise. And you'll see that in your, in Chapter 134 in the historic district criteria. You see sprinkled through there a lot of references to views from public places. So, that's an important thing to keep in mind as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Say that again? I'm joking. Super important point.
It is.
I think we're.
We're there.
Well, let's keep going, another couple hours.
I could keep going. Don't threaten me with a good time.
You'll be sharing that PowerPoint.
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to circulate the PowerPoint to us?
I will, yeah. And I'm sorry, I was having tech issues.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good primer. And yeah, we'll keep coming back to questions of secret. Seems to be the more involved, one of the more involved aspects of our reviews. So, welcome everybody to the July 2025 meeting of the City of Beacon Planning Board. First order of business is the approval of our June 2025 minutes. Unless there are modifications to note that we already haven't, I'll accept a motion to accept June minutes into the record.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to the first item on our agenda, which is the continued public hearing and continued review of application for site plan approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, 291 Main Street, submitted by Telephone Building Beacon LLC. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Hope you all enjoyed your fourth. For the record, Taylor Palmer with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader, on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, I am joined by the project architect, R.A. Siegel, and Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design, as well as my colleague, Jessica Zalen. We're also joined by the property owner. Since the last time the applicant met before you all, back in May, in addition to Cuddy &amp; Fader joining the team, the telephone team, I'm also joined by our historic and cultural preservation specialist, Beth Selig of Hudson Cultural. To that end, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, as you stated, we are before you this evening in connection with the continued review of the applicant's proposal to construct a two-story and partial three-story mixed-use addition to the telephone building, along with associated site improvements. Before I do go to R.A., to walk through the updated site plan and the renderings that are before you for the project, since it has been a few months, the applicant was last before you, and we have the benefit of new members to the board, we did want to bring everyone up to speed where we are based on the board's input. So let me first start with a little bit about the property, which is presently classified in the city's CMS zoning district, as well as in the HDLO zoning district, as R.A. and Michael walk you through those plans on the project. The property is currently improved with the existing telephone building, which is a historic structure in the CMS district and the HDLO. The makeup of the neighborhood really starts with a tour. I'm not going to do the site visit. You'll know it as we head down to East Main Street. But from South Walnut, you'll head towards East Main Street, passing the Alps Chocolate Factory, as well as the Chinese Restaurant, before the entrance to the Car Wash and U-Haul Storage on the property. Across the street from that, of course, is the Key Food, the crispy chicken, Krispy Kreme Chicken, excuse me, and the Careful MD, which was just added. Most of these stories, most of these buildings are one-story buildings, and although two stories in the CMS is a requirement now for any new construction in the district. You then pass the one-story attached buildings with Finders Keepers, Smokers Mecca, and Beacon Fade and Shave Barbershop. And then, of course, the typically bumper stickered blue pole at the exit to the Car Wash before you get to the telephone building, which is across the street from the new mural on AMA, across the street facing the building. So with that backdrop, it's more fully detailed than our submission date, June 24th. The applicant is proposing to install two-story and partial three-story mixed-use addition to the telephone building. That's going to include some retail space on the Main Street facade, and then the first story of the building, and then three residential units on the upper stories. The applicant is also proposing some site improvements, including landscaping, lighting, and a parking area in the below and the rear portion of the addition. Since we did last appear before you in May, well, the applicant last appeared before you in May, we did make some important design changes that we want to present this evening, focusing first on the front of the building, and then hopefully to the party in the back. The design of the addition has been modified to maintain the character and prominence of this existing historic structure, which the applicant has spent a lot of time and money, and the prior owner spent a lot of time maintaining and upgrading. And this does not interfere with the experience of the historic telephone building. And I'll ask Beth to speak more specifically to that, and the existing brick facade, for example, facing the Car Wash, which is an important point that, you know, when we look at what these buildings are, what can be built next to it, what the zoning is for, for three-story buildings, but the potential step back for a fourth story, all of that relates to the context of what we're developing here, which is a setback building two stories into a three-story development to really give full birth to the telephone building. The applicant is now proposing, as I mentioned, a step of the portion of the South Brett facade back from the property line to eliminate the overhang above the parking area. And we also eliminated the bay window and the planter box from South Brett facade as well. In addition, a roof plan has been added to the plans, which demonstrates that the roof HVA system will be screened by the parapet. In addition, we did include a parking analysis that demonstrates that the proposed off-street parking conforms to the city's regulations for the CMS, and any excess parking for the demand can certainly be accommodated in public parking in the area. With that, I'll first turn to R.A. to walk through those design changes, and then to Beth to discuss some of the additional context, in particular, the relationship of this development to the historic building, the telephone building.
Good evening. Yeah, so we submitted updated plans based on the comments we received at the previous meeting that we were at. As Taylor mentioned, we included a roof plan to demonstrate how the rooftop mechanical equipment is going to be concealed, so you're not going to see that from the street anywhere. There weren't too many changes to the Main Street facade. There was a few adjustments the last time around, but we were focusing on the addition in the rear of the building. And so basically, what we did was we removed those brackets and the overhang, and sort of took a little bite out of the corner of the building, so that we could just have a flat facade without the overhang on South Brett Street. So there's a few images of that. The renderings at the top of the sheet is up there are the previous versions for reference. We didn't update the photorealistic renderings yet. It's the sketches below are the proposed design now.
Sorry, help me out here, R.A.
Yeah.
You're saying view six, five, and four, or, oh, no, sorry, view three and two. That's what you're referring to?
Basically, all the six sketches on the bottom of the page-
Yeah.
-show the most recent design.
Understood. Thank you.
And the photorealistic ones are for reference for the time being, until we, you know, we come to some agreement on it. But, yeah, so that's basically the changes that we're looking at.
Can I ask a question about the modification of the rear building-
Yeah.
-facing the street? Why did you take that chunk out of it?
Just so we could eliminate that overhang right at the street, because that seemed to be causing some issues with the design, you know, because there was sort of, I think someone on the board was talking about that as like an awkward feature there. So basically, it's back eight feet, you know, where the overhang starts, but it doesn't present itself as an overhang, you know, on that main facade there.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense. So, in the previous version, you're referring to the planting box as the overhang, right?
No, basically what happened is-
Because you did remove that for the new version.
Yeah, yeah, the bay window and the planting thing are gone, as well as those brackets. Because what happened was when the full facade was right up against, you know, in one line, up against South Brett Street, there would have been an overhang, you know, to the left there, because of the way the parking worked. I couldn't bring that wall down straight.
I see.
Yeah.
Because you don't have the turning radius, is what you're saying.
Right, yeah. So we're limited on the first floor to, you know, where that wall has to land. So just sort of to mitigate that, push that back.
All right. I've got opinions on it. I understand it. Keep going.
I think that's about, yeah. But that's about where I am, so we're going to let Beth talk a little bit.
Good evening. For the record, Beth Selig, Hudson Cultural Services. I have spent, I'll just say the last 25 years, I won't age myself, working in the fields of cultural resources and historic preservation. And in my field, in my world, a national register listing or historic property does not mean that the building or the historic district is frozen in time. It's not what it's meant to do. It's meant, that historic designation is meant to allow additions, new buildings in historic districts to grow in a very thoughtful and carefully planned out way. And the way we measure, you know, whether or not something's in compliance or not in compliance, is we generally follow the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. And historic buildings that do get restored or additions that go on them need to be functional, they need to be economically viable, while at the same time reflecting the criteria that make them significant and focused on their historic intention. Now, there's 10 standards for the treatment of historic properties. The two that are focused on additions are the two that are up here on the slide, standards nine and 10. And I'm not going to read them out for you, but to generally summarize, these standards state that new additions need to be compatible, they need to be differentiated, and they need to be reversible. I took a look at the design that has been most recently presented to you, and I looked through the Chapter 134 Historic District Overlay Zone and the Central Main Street Design Standards, and they follow the Secretary of Interior standards with a specificity that is more appropriate at a local level than you would have at a federal level. My detailed review is included in the packet that I submitted with the, I will not walk through every single bullet point. But to summarize, you know, the facade of the new addition is two stories in height, as meets compliance, and it's 70% glass, according to these standards, and it does have a cornice line all across the top of the roof. And the storefront is accentuated with a large storefront window. The second floor features a nice decorative panel, which is in line with a similar pattern that is featured on the telephone building, which creates some additional architectural interest on the facade of the addition. It, also, the new addition as designed follows a winter pattern that is similar to that of the telephone building itself, using single pane, double-hung windows. The brick exterior of the proposed addition on the front side, on the Main Street side, will use a brick that will complement the historic structure, but of a different color, so that it is sufficiently differentiated from the historic structure, and we avoid any false historicism. The new addition is secondary in size and scale, so it is somewhat subservient to the historic telephone building. It is also set back from the street plane. So in the, if you're looking on Google Street, if you're walking down the street, the way the building is proposed, it's actually going to be back behind that blue pillar for the Car Wash. So you'll see the blue pillar first, and then the new building is set back. And it, from that viewpoint, from the public viewpoint, it will not interfere with your understanding of the prominence and significance of the telephone building itself. And accordance with standard 10, the addition is being added in a way that will not obscure or alter any of the historic character-defining features of the building. So with standard 10, you know, if the addition was to be removed, the historic telephone building would still appear as it does today. None of the architectural details that are currently present on the telephone building's principal facades will be impacted or altered. The cornice line is very visible on the South Brett Street side, as well as the Main Street side. And on the historic sandborne map that R.A. has a picture of, we can see that, I mean, it's sort of hard to see on this image, but there's a solid black line that goes around the outside of the building, which indicates a metal cornice, identifying those two facades as the principal elevations of the structure. The western wall of the building, which is the wall that currently faces the Car Wash and that empty alley, it's important to note that there are no windows or openings on the main part of that wall. And given the time of the building was constructed in the early 1900s, it was, when you interpret, when you look at that, you interpret that as there was an assumption that at some point, given the urban setting, that this would have been a common wall or a party wall. It was not expected that there would have been, if it was going to be a standalone building, there would have been opening for some sort of light filtration or some sort of access on that side of the building. And as I said, if, as the addition, it will not be impacting any of that wall at all. When you're standing on the street, looking through all that beautiful glass windows, you'll still be able to see that exposed brick from the front of the window. And when you're inside the building on that first level, you'll be able to see that brick wall as well. The rear part of the addition is separated from the historic portion of the telephone building. There's a corridor, there's a bay. In historic, using the federal standards, they like to see some sort of hyphen to make sure that the historic structure stays prominent and pronounced. And the design there with a gabled roof and a, you know, peaked roof is more typical of the residential buildings that are currently on South Brett. So it sort of blends nicely, rather than if you had a flat roof, like those that appear in the commercial structures on Main Street. So, based on my review of the most current design, I feel that, my professional opinion, that it follows not only the federal standards, but also the CMS and HDLO design standards. And that's all I have. I'd have to answer any questions, if you have any. If not, I will...
That was good.
No, if not, I'll turn it back to Dave.
Thank you.
At this point, that conducts our presentation. We may have some more in store as we get into discussion about the back of the building, but we'll save that, because we know it's a public hearing, so to dissent, you have questions for us before you open it to the public. That's our presentation for tonight.
Yeah, I'm just curious, as far as the parking analysis, could you just kind of summarize, walk us through that briefly?
Sure. I may have to respond back to you on that specifically, just from the number of spaces we have. We're in the CMS zoning district where parking is not required. We only have the units in the retail, so that's the reliance on the existing parking in the area. But we'll get you a more specific answer to the analysis.
Okay. I mean, I can sort of form my own conclusions, but I just wanted to hear from you what-
The idea is that four spaces were to satisfy the parking requirement for the units and have the commercial component. But in that area, generally speaking, it is proximate to municipal parking. So those are standards for CMS that no parking is required, but we're trying to, we provided four spaces to try and meet that demand, under the current design.
Okay, thanks. So we'll go to our consultants. Perhaps Natalie will start with you first.
Yep. So we talked about this, my first two comments have to do with the landscaped area. We talked about this at the last meeting, sorry, May meeting, when the applicant was last here. So, small typo correction, the table on the site plan says proposed is 10.4.
Sorry, I was asking for a document. Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no. For the landscaped area, the table on the site plan says proposed is 10.4%. And I think the other documents clarified that it's 6.4%. So just to correct that, but I'm operating under 6.4 is the correct propose. And so I think, we talked about this at the last meeting, that there was a discussion with the planning board, there is an option within the CMS district for that 10% to be reduced to 5% if landscape, the landscaped area on site is accessible to the public. So, Taylor can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the applicant is contending that the proposed plan qualifies for the reduction to 5% based on there are street trees being added and planters along South Brett Street, which will add a benefit to the pedestrian public environment. I think this thing that the planning board brought up, that's still an outstanding question, is those aspects are required in the CMS district, or the planning board has the ability to require that street trees and planters be added? So I think that's still a point of discussion for the planning board to decide whether that, those aspects would also deem this project eligible for the reduction to the 5%. Otherwise, either I think we have to add more landscaping area, or a variance has to be sought for that.
Do you mind if I add on to Natalie's comment on that?
Yep.
So, the other thing I wanted to bring up, and I think we may have talked about this in May, is that the provision of the code about the landscaped area in the CMS district talks, it specifically says, it requires a minimum of 10% of the lot shall be landscaped with trees, shrubs, et cetera, et cetera. So it specifically says it's 10% of the lot. So that means that the landscaping has to be on the lot to qualify for that 10%. The issue about the reduction of 5%, that talks about that the requirement shall be reduced to 5% if the landscaped area is accessible to the public. And again, the landscaped area, referring back to 10% of the lot.
Right. It's what it sounds like-
So, I think just from a reading of the code-
It sounds like to me, applicants trying to-
It's not going to apply.
...define the street trees as-
Part of the lot.
Part of the lot, which doesn't- Part of the lot, which doesn't...
I may save some time on the application just for the benefit of the board. I mentioned there's going to be a party in the back, so there may be some, so stay tuned. But the issue, we know that the issue needs to be addressed, and it sounds like the 10% needs to be addressed onsite.
Yeah.
Got it, thanks.
Party comment.
You're not going to go for variance?
No.
Party in the back, okay.
Party in the back.
Comment three for mine, there's a section in the code that requires a pedestrian clearway of at least eight feet wide unless site conditions necessitate a narrower width. So the proposed clearway along South Brett Street is around 6.5, so less than the eight. I make the suggestion that given the existing historic building facade is where it is and that's not going to be touched, right? That's the existing 291. And the provision of street trees, which are encouraged by the code, I would say that there is, there's justification there for the planning board to consider a slightly narrower pedestrian clearway from eight feet down to 6.5.
To accommodate the street trees, yeah.
Bicycle racks, so within CMS district, the planning board may require bicycle racks within the street or building transition zones. Given the limited onsite parking and the goal of supporting alternative transportation, a bike rack is recommended near the corner of South Brett and Main Street to be provided for visitors of this building as well as the block. A correction about the project description, the parking analysis is still referencing, I think, four units rather than the three that's being proposed. Elevations are forthcoming with notes on materials. I think we can, we discussed at the last meeting going through the HDLO and the CMS district, so I can do that now.
Yeah, I think, I think, let's save that, let's go through Jones. John doesn't have many other...
Yeah, I just had one more section. So before, as lighting, I just had some comments on lighting there. I think we lost the lighting fixtures. They were on the plan and then they disappeared. L2s and L3s disappeared, so those just need to come back. And then a few other additions. And I just wanted to bring back up, we had a comment last time talking about the L1 color temperature as well as kind of, what'd you call it? A glare bomb?
Yeah.
A glare bomb underneath from the L2. So I just didn't see how that was addressed, so I just wanted to make sure I flagged that in my letter so we can talk through that when you're ready to talk through lighting.
Fine. If I knew there was a glare bomb, I would have brought that, that would have been part of my, that would have been part of my presentation.
I thought that was a joke. I thought I'd set up for you.
I'll pay more attention. That was not, we're not on the application yet, so forgive me for not being able to include that.
Yeah, so let's talk about any highlights John wants to bring up for the board and for the applicant. And then, yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to walk through those HDLO requirements together and then discuss the findings of the parking analysis. So...
So the comments I have relate to preparation of cost estimate for performance work that's going to be done within the right way, but that'll come later on. There needs to be some coordination between the architectural drawings and the engineering drawings as regards to labeling where snow storage areas are, and then back to the views, which they're still working on.
Is snow storage already indicated?
It's indicated in one location on Sheet 1, but it's indicated in another location on the engineering drawings.
We'll make sure it aligns on all plans.
So the landscaped area is also doing double duty.
Yeah.
Could a glare bomb melt the snow?
Okay, so just before we go into detail on the HDLO regulations, any questions, board members, outside of parking and outside of HDLO, or other comments to the applicant?
I have a question about the screening of the parking area for the residential neighbor to the south. Is there something that you can do there?
I think there is. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised.
You're going to reference the party in the back again?
The party in the back.
Stay tuned. We have to hear from the public first, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
But yes, sorry Karen, we have some ideas.
Thanks.
Might be more landscaping too.
Okay. Yeah, so let's go through the HDLO requirements.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, are you going to use a consultant's letter as a guide?
Yeah, I think we should. I mean, that way we can kind of go through, I don't know if you want me to go through one, or we can go through them, or I think the point of this was to, I think we have the applicant's responses, so thank you for providing this. I think this was very helpful to have you go through the project and explain how it felt.
Yep.
It met the criteria. I don't know if we want to just let board members speak to ones that they want to discuss, or should we just go one by one? I'm happy to walk us through that.
Well, let's try it the first way.
Try it the first way?
Yeah. If there are items that any board members, on your review of the applicant's assessment of how their project complies, let's talk about them, if you have any questions or concerns about any of the responses.
Yes, so let's start with 134-7, right? Section 134-7 is broken up into three kind of sections, right? There's A, B, and C, and there's kind of criteria under each one of those, and the applicant has provided a response to each one. And so I think, you know, if we want to start with the bucket of A, which is the design character and appropriateness of the property of the proposed alteration and new construction. And there's five different criteria in there. There's, did anyone have comments or questions on those responses? And compatibility, I guess.
Well, I mean, the first thing says that construction shall build on historic context, which is a mandatory direction. The next standard talks about contrasting features and doesn't prohibit them, but indicates they shouldn't be arbitrary, which I'm basically reading as saying, cast a judicious eye towards New structures are, can be, are expressly authorized to be distinguishable from current structures. That is not a standard that applies to alterations. And exterior elements shall emphasize continuity. One, one thought I had is that in order to actually apply these standards, we have to talk about what exactly, what features or characteristics exactly are giving the building its historical significance. The place I would start would be the historical listing that you and Natalie Quinn had forwarded in advance of the meeting, and I took that as emphasizing the importance of both the incorporation of stone on the front facade of the building, windowsills, the key, et cetera, as well as the cornice being present on the three sides of the building. If those are the defining features, then that gives me some direction on how this ought to be applied, but are those the defining features?
I think those are the defining features. And I think the one thing that I would add from that historic inventory document is that the description of the Main Street facade with the four large-scale pilasters, the three bays, there's a very distinct symmetry to the facade and the prominence of the building since it has been kind of standing, you know, apart from other structures, that that is sort of an implied feature other than the details of the cornice and the materials.
And its location on the site is meant to stand, make it standalone, like the Acropolis, right? It's sort of a, something we looked at on all four.
Are you pulling that from the form, from the designation form?
Oh, I'm just highlighting one of the unique features of the building.
Yeah.
And the fact that it was built, set back from its lot line, right, means that it wasn't intended to be part of a array of buildings, but a building that uniquely and iconically stood apart.
So maybe we should talk for a second just before you begin, because I think there's a, there's a speculation in your document that since we don't have windows on the northwestern portion of the facade, that there was an anticipation that at some point an adjoining structure would be, you know, built and there would be a shared wall, or, and I think that's, first of all, I would have a question about, is that, how speculative is that? Is it possible that the telephone switchgear that was originally designed for the interior of the building made it such that there was not going to be an opportunity to put windows on that wall? Certainly, they extended the cornice all the way around, so if they did anticipate an adjoining building, they would have had to, they would have assumed it would have been lower, right?
Right. And the brick was... Yeah, the bricks...
No, no, I'm talking about the, but the northwest, the northwest portion of the facade that we're talking about that doesn't have the windows, does have the cornice. So if your speculation is correct, that they were assuming that another building would be built adjoining, they assumed that it would be not as tall.
Yeah, I mean, was there a lot line adjustment?
Can you let her respond?
So the information I've gleaned is coming from the historic Sanborn fire insurance maps, which are very highly detailed maps.
Yeah, familiar with them?
They do not show the cornice line on that side of the building. However, there is a postcard, and Ari can put it up, that does show that it does wrap around a little bit on that roof line, but that's not on the historic maps. So the, looking at that western wall, there's no evidence in the exterior of the structure that there were windows that got filled in or that there was change.
Yeah, we don't see that.
So the likelihood, you know, my understanding from looking at many, many urban projects and Sanborn maps, is that there was an understanding that there would be urban infill, there would be additional buildings constructed on that line.
Against, clarify what you just said about the cornice, because I'm not sure I understood. You're saying the Sanborn...
On the Sanborn historic map, Ari, if you can go to that slide, it's only shown on the Main Street side and on the South Brett side. It's not shown wrapping around any other elevations of the building.
And the Sanborn...
But that's, it's a commercial...
I've relied on fire insurance maps for environmental investigations for decades, and primarily their purpose was to show chemical storage, firefighting equipment. I mean, they did detail building heights, footprints, but they generally are not, I would never have used them as a source for architectural details like cornices or...
They were primarily also used to determine, you know, how fire safe a building was. So what were the materials, how combustible was the entire building? And generally, in my field, they are considered highly reliable. The, however, like I said, the postcard image from 2010 does show that the cornice line wraps around the very top elevation of that building.
So there's no sense that this cornice on the northwestern was added later? Because I'm not sure what you're trying to...
I have no information to say that it was added later. I don't, I know there was extensive renovations done for the building. I don't think it was, but the fact that it's, that there's no other detail, there's no manifestations, there's nothing else on that western wall suggests to me that it was intended to become a common wall.
Look, my observation is a little more basic here, and I don't mean to sound disrespectful saying this, but who cares? Like, none of these standards that we've been looking over consider the subjective intentions of the person who built the building. We're talking about whether a proposed addition is meeting standards of historical context.
Yeah, I think the planning board member was trying to imply that the standalone nature of the building is a distinguishing factor. That distinguishing factor is not referenced in the designation form, so that's why I was trying to get clarity on that aspect.
I'm going to make an observation. Yes, this was designed and built on its piece of property as somewhat standalone, because it was set back off of its western...
Yes.
...property line. That allowed it to express that cornice all the way back. That exists. It's clear, it's obvious. I will say, however, that it doesn't necessarily say, simply because that space is there and that cornice is there, that nothing should be built there. And keep in mind, there's potential for the car wash building to be demolished and built as a three-story structure, not obviously as close to this building as the addition proposed, but one that would obscure the view of that cornice.
I was only adding the clarification because there are historic assets. For example, I know one very pelted manor in the city of Poughkeepsie that is set on a hill, surrounded by a bucolic, and the setting is very much referenced, like in its designation form of like, this is why this building was designated, because it is set here on this hill. So I was just trying to reference that. I agree that the cornice line and materials on the front facade, some materials and the divisions in the front, those are all kind of referenced in here as distinguishing factors. So I was just trying to piece that out to your same point, that I don't...
It's certainly a unique distinguishing factor. In my view, and based on this application and the fact that they're not disturbing that element, and again, as part of one of the requirements, if this addition were to be removed, the building would remain as is in whole, that it doesn't necessarily, anything I've read about the requirements preclude the ability for something to be built here. So I think that's what we need to make sure that we're clear about.
Yeah. And if I could just finish my thought, I think we, my point is that we shouldn't be moved one way or the other by speculation about what was anticipated when the building was constructed.
Agreed.
So, and...
Okay, so that's point been made.
So that's, that one. And I think, I would like to also suggest though, that the description in the historic inventory report implies that the symmetry and structure of the facade is significant to the value of the building, and that...
Which remains. The symmetry and the structure of the facade remains. It's not being altered.
Probably where we differ in opinion a little bit, only because I think that, and we'll get to it when we get to the next, when we get to Part B of the standards, but, and I'll say for a second, just to speculate for a minute, if another building had been constructed, you know, in the same era or near it, that would have been an entire structure, you know, with its own cohesive design, and it would have been different than an annex or an addition, which I think is sort of, is potentially disruptive to the symmetry of the facade and the...
I'm sorry, so you're doing what you asked the applicant not to do.
Well, and I said, I guess it's kind of like, don't be moved one way or the other. That's it, well.
Yeah. So again, I think to David's point, we got to make sure that we stick to what these requirements are. And again, I agree with you, not conjecture about the intent of the original design, whatever, but let's stick to these provisions.
Yeah. So maybe it's helpful to kind of just read them a little bit while we go through. So number one is, construction shall be built on historic context with applications required to demonstrate aspects of inspiration from or similarities to adjacent HDLO structures or historic buildings. So I think that kind of gives you guidance on what that historic context is, right, of looking at inspiration similarities, I think, and based on, I'm looking at the applicant's response, they've talked about things like window patterns, panel design on the second floor that matches the panel design on the existing historic structure, and window pattern on the rear portion of the proposed addition. So they are giving, they are, correct if I'm wrong, but the proposed architecture is inspired by the window orientation as well as this decorative kind of panel.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of cohesion that's trying to happen without detracting from the characteristics of the telephone building and without being overly copycat on the new building.
Okay. So is there any other inspirations or similarities that the board wanted to point out that should be thought about? Okay. Two is compatibility does not imply historic reproduction, but new architecture shall also not arbitrarily impose contrasting materials, scales, colors, or design features. So was there comment on things that are arbitrarily contrasting?
I don't think it's contrasting, I don't think it's arbitrarily contrasting, I think it's intentionally contrasting, although that does sort of tie back into the prior question of historical context.
But it also steers away from historic reproduction.
Thank you, that was better than copycat.
The intent is to reinforce and extend the traditional patterns of the HDLO district, but new structures may still be distinguishable in up-to-date technologies and details, most evident in window construction and interiors. Any comments on that?
Well, but this isn't new construction. If we apply that to the context of new construction, it makes sense.
The addition is new, right?
Yeah.
Doesn't this, doesn't this standard use both alteration and construction?
But alteration would be alteration to the historic asset, right, like the existing historic building.
Right.
Whereas this is new construction of an addition next to, attached to the historic building. I believe you would still deem it as new construction, right? Because you're not altering the historic building.
Correct.
Okay, exterior...
Actually, no, you're right.
Actually, no, you're right, it says new architecture, doesn't say new constru-, okay, all right.
Exterior accessory elements such as signs, lighting, fixtures, and landscaping shall emphasize continuity to the adjacent HLO properties and historic characters, characteristics of the sidewalk and streetscape. Can we actually have a visual of it up while we're talking through this? I think that might be helpful for public and everybody. Okay, so this is specifically focused on signs, lighting, fixtures, and landscaping.
So as far as signage, you have that one zone that says store above the storefront, right? And that's all the intended signage? Yeah, how about lighting?
You know, can I just mention this for a second? Maybe one of the things that we can do is maybe as we start to obscure this building, maybe we can celebrate the historical parts of it. And one of the ways in which you can do that is by lighting that cornice at night. Maybe that's something we could think of to kind of, I feel like we're doing a lot of kind of back and forth about different parts, but we're not...
You mean the existing building?
The existing cornice. We're not really talking about architecture that is celebrating the old one, we're talking about architecture that is stepping back or not being obtrusive to it. In the renderings, you don't have any unification of lighting fixtures between them, and on the renderings there, they're not unified. But we could talk a little bit more about that, but maybe there's something to that, I just wanted to talk about.
Oh, yeah, no, no, that, that, that's something that we plan to develop and, and we would, you know, once we get to a point where we're a little bit more locked into this, we'll get renderings and show you the night view and how the lighting works, but we're keeping that in mind.
Great.
I think it's a great idea to try to celebrate the cornice with lighting.
Where possible, parking shall be located towards the rear of the property. I think we all agree this is as far to the rear as you can make it. Okay, so now we're moving into section B that talks about scale and height of proposed alteration or new construction. Where possible, an addition to an historic structure should be placed towards the rear or at least recessed so that the historic structure remains more prominent than the subsidiary addition.
Clearly achieved here.
But I would say that...
This is not towards the rear.
We're minimally...
Slightly recessed.
Like minimally meeting this one, and that's, I think this is where I start to have significant concerns. So, the first part of the statement, we're not meeting.
It's recessed.
Or at least recessed. And so I think that, you know, there's a judgment call here about, is it recessed enough to sort of avoid, you know, disruptions to the aesthetics of the existing building and its facade? It is, it's recessed a bit, it's going to be very visible from, you know, when you're walking towards this building, if you're walking towards this building from the east, you're not going to see it. But when you're, when you're coming from, from the west, you know, this is going to be very, to me, it's very prominent.
And I have to tell you that the, all the renderings are a little bit deceptive, because if you take a photograph from across the street, the line of that one-story building that's across will line up with the bottom of the cornice, right? And that's not the case in any of these renderings. Any view from across the street or down the sidewalk on the same side, right? That, any, a one-story building almost obscures that, that cornice. A two-story building completely obscures the cornice where basically it removes the effect that it had, and, and the...
But Kevin, if I may, you're just, you're, just to point it out, this is the blue pole from the exit of the car wash that we're talking about. So the reality of what you're seeing is obscured by the car wash.
No, what I'm saying is this rendering...
It's already an impacted view.
Are you familiar with view cameras? The way that perspectives in cameras and in renderings, right, can be distorted by changing the point of perspective, right? And that's one of the things that's happening, you make those choices every time you do a rendering, right? And those choices can be selected so that they selectively make certain, diminish the impact of certain...
So Kevin, are you saying that you're, you think the applicant is misrepresenting the actual...
Well, I'm just saying that renderings themselves misrepresent the experience.
Are you saying that they are in this case? Because if, okay, so can you confirm that what you're showing us is an actual accurate representation of what will ultimately be built? Because if, if that's the case, then we need to see it in the way it's going to actually be appearing.
But, well, I don't think he's saying it's not an accurate representation...
That's exactly what I just heard.
...intended to be built. I think what he's saying is that by controlling the angle of view being used, you're going to change the relative perspective of surrounding structures.
Right, those views are taken from a certain height and from a certain distance, and also can be affected, you know, you're aware of how this works, right? I'm just saying...
I am, so, so what I'm hearing is, is that you're, you're stating that you believe that the applicant is misrepresenting how the buildings will ultimately appear in the built environment through what they're submitting to us, that's what I'm hearing.
This is one static viewpoint that's been selected by the applicant.
So then, let's help, let's help the applicant, because instead of continuing to go around and around, because this has been with us a really long time, we gotta get to, we gotta get through this, and we've got to have a substantive reasoned understanding for the applicant and by ourselves as to why we might, because it sounds like you would like to, based on some of what you're describing, not approve this. So we've got to be really super accurate about why.
And so I'll just go back to the language one more time, it's just because I want to keep us focused on this, right? Where possible, so this is not a shall, this is a where possible. An addition to a historic structure should be placed towards the rear or at least recessed. And so I think what we've, what I've heard the comments is, the building is recessed. I think it's recessed from Main Street. It's also been brought down a story from where we originally saw it, right? When it was the three-story addition. So it's kind of, it's recessed back and it's taken down a height. Some feel like that's maybe not substantial enough. I think we'll just have to explain, so it says, so that the historic structure remains more prominent than the subsidiary addition. So I think to go further on that, we would have to say why this is not sufficient to make the historic, why this make, what is proposed is not allowing this historic structure to be the most prominent.
Well, okay, look, just...
Because that, I'm just trying to take us back to the language, right? The language is more prominent.
Agreed, and it's also a language that uses the word should, making this somewhat, um... Guidance?
It's not a shall.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's not a shall.
It's not a must.
It's a where possible.
Okay, so like...
It's a may.
I think what the record indicates is the addition is lot, is not placed exclusively towards the rear. It is somewhat recessed.
Correct.
Whether it is sufficiently recessed is a matter of opinion.
So that the, and the point of this is so that the historic structure remains more prominent than the subsidiary addition.
Can I just add, I understand that there's concerns about how far back it's recessed. It is already back behind that blue pole of the car wash, and if that was a solid wall, we'd be having different discussions about viewpoint. But if we take it further back off the street, doesn't that then create a void that is also a detraction on the street view?
I don't think so, you could put, you could put tables there, you could put, you know, you could have a cafe there.
When you're looking at the, the Main Street, street plane, urban setting, and you have a vacant courtyard in front of the building, it seems out of character, out of nature.
No, we've got other designs that have been approved, like Cross Street, that have intentionally have a, a space, a plaza space in front of the building.
And it's never been a complaint, it's existed for decades.
You can go too far back and create a negative...
And yes, I would agree, you are trying to make a continuity of street wall, typically in Main Street, and that language is repeated throughout the CMS district about street wall, and that's why there's a zero, you know, limited front yard setbacks.
And we had the same conversation in the 300 Main Street application where we have to have, we, we talked about making that continuity as well, we talked about it with the arcade and otherwise. So there's, there are different reasons or different purposes, but the intent here is to continue that through the site, but we would do that up at the frontage, but to respect the code and the HLO where it says to recess it, we've recessed it and we've proposed that on this.
Now, if that's the case, why did we approve the plaza in front of the building?
It's a different application, let's keep going through the requirements.
But every precedent is important.
I don't personally believe that that particular precedent applies here.
That is an entryway, like an entryway to a pedestrian area versus like a setback building? I would say that those are slightly different aspects.
It depends on how you design space. I also think, there's one other thing I want to point out, is that the existence of that blue girder on the car wash should not take on undue significance. That thing may come or go. I know that it, you know, it's there, but it, it's not a... I, I think there's, there's like emphasis being placed on things like, well, because this blue girder is here, then this somehow gives carte blanche to, you know...
I don't think that's what we're saying, we're saying that that applicant, the property owner, can develop that property not just for three stories, but for four stories with a setback. So that, that, that project, that future...
Again, and that's speculation, you don't know...
Come on, we gotta keep going, guys, okay? Let's keep moving.
Okay. Any alteration or addition to a historic structure shall not damage or obscure character-defining features of the architecture or site to the maximum extent possible. I think we've heard from the applicant's team that this is, we're not removing anything from the historic building and that, as state interior standards require, the addition could be removed, right? It's not doing any damage to the existing historic structure that could not be reversed.
Right, and we considered even one other component, which was potentially carrying the cornice even in the back just to try and connect all the dots, and then that went against one of the sort of lot of what you're not supposed to do in historic preservation, which is sort of, to use that word, copycat or to sort of...
Modify the...
Right.
Okay, so it says, any alteration or addition to, to an historic structure shall not damage or obscure the character-defining features of the architecture or site to the maximum extent possible. Does this obscure character-defining features of the architecture? Or the site?
I, I've made my, I think anybody who looked at that building would feel like it was diminished if that aspect, the strongest iconic aspect is what we've been talking about since the beginning of this. And the thing that I feel like needs to be addressed is that the three-dimensional aspect of this dominant cornice is a Parthenon-like, three-dimensional building that is built of high-quality materials with high-quality design in a, in a centralized location where there aren't that many architecturally significant buildings in a building that was, in a town that was a factory town.
So one point you also made, Kevin, was that the rendering was not accurate or didn't, didn't present the, the proposal in the right light. What about if we had presented only the South Brett side of the building, where you do see the full corner of the building, right? You have a full corner of this property. We're talking about one corner seen from Main Street through a blue pole. So with all due respect, we have...
I can propose several ways to develop this property that maintain historic character, and one of them is just not, not developing in this slot as it was intended, as it was intended. It's not putting anything there, that will preserve it.
When it comes to what we're actually talking about here, I mean, the feature that we're talking about having obscured is that cornice, and it's largely going to be obscured from the tree, the street. People with drones will be able to see it. For someone walking in an easterly direction, the recess is not what's causing that, or at least the front recess, it's the second story. And I mean, yeah, okay, so it's shorter, what, three feet shorter? And it's a little less prominent. In other applications, that might go a lot further, but if we're not supposed to obscure character-defining features to the maximum extent possible, we're not doing it here.
Well, look, the cornice is not impacted by any construction, it's visually obscured partially, but does it do that to such a delirious, deleterious...
Right, it's fully visible from the South Brett corner. Three, two, full sides of the building, from the rear, completely unexposed.
You're saying, looking to the west, you will see, yes.
If you're looking back towards where we are right now.
And looking at the building from the other side.
Completely untouched, you won't even see the addition, correct. And we're not, we're only focused on this corner, which is important, no, no questions asked. But you have a full building here we're talking about, you can't just say one corner. I appreciate that, we're setting it back, that that piece of it has, that there's some impact, but it was reduced by the building height, it was reduced by the recess of the building. It was changed by the modification of the cornice that's been added to this building. There's been a number of techniques and adjustments that have been implemented to help satisfy these criteria while also taking into the rest of the building, which we're not talking about. We're ignoring what is visible, what is unchanged. It's not just this corner.
Yeah, and I will say, so the nominating form does talk about distinguished cornice and the front facade, and then most of the pictures representing the building are actually from the Brett Street corner, right? Looking at the two parts of the cornice that are being fully retained and unobscured, right? Which is the front facade, so the ones facing the public right of way, not the one facing a private adjacent lot.
And Mr. Vermeil brought up a great point.
Back in the building too.
Yeah.
Of the rear of the building, yes, but if you...
If they're gonna obscure that just because of the photograph view?
We've got to move on.
Okay.
One last point I would note, and I know now is going to go back to the factors, but Mr. Vermeil brought up a point. We're also, something that can be considered and put into that design is emphasizing that cornice, giving it the history through day and night, bringing that out through this project and through this proposal. That's something that can be incorporated, that's, we just need to move the design to, to something where the board feels comfortable with where it is. This is, this property is not meant to be left vacant. It has, it has the zoning to develop the property as it is, it has to meet these criteria, which we're going through. The applicant has made multiple iterations and changes to try and address this, and we, again, the party in the back, we haven't even gotten to, because we keep talking about this corner, but I'll turn back to Natalie to go through the factors.
The property is not vacant, and what we are doing right now is applying the zoning regulations.
Yes, if I could just finish this one thought, I would say that as far as the shoulds or mayes or shalls, you know, that we don't have, I think that we're minimally meeting the criteria, but the design is, is sort of maximizing the volume. So it's a budding, the very bottom of the cornice, it's minimally recessed. So the question of, to me, could the design be changed so that you could still develop the lot but have less of an impact on the historic features, the answer is yes. This design sort of minimally preserves, or does the minimum to not obscure the historic features in favor of getting the maximum square footage, you know?
And also meaning the code required two-story height requirement in the CMS.
But there's a subjective component when you're looking at one of the most architecturally significant buildings. There's a handful of buildings on Main Street that are real standout buildings, like the Howland Center, like this building. So I think there's a precedent in looking at an alteration or addition to one of these buildings, you know, that...
Yeah, I, you know, I think these ones are specifically made where possible and may so that, so that they don't get taken too far, right? And that you're looking at the conditions of this area, so I...
But it is being maximized, so I mean, so I think that's the question of which is going how far and what direction.
I don't want to belabor the point further, but the point of historic preservation in, with historic structures is to make, maintain them through their functionality. To make, have a building, building that's used, have a building that's taken care of because it's being used, and to restrict a building to never ever change limits its functionality. So if we can, through historic preservation, find the happy medium so that the setting is maintained, the form and function of the building are maintained, I think that's an important way to move forward.
But I want to add that that building is in exquisite condition. It was retained excellently throughout the decades, and the only work that's being done will diminish its quality.
Well, that, yeah, it looks... We're, we're, we're looking at a standard that uses mandatory language, shall not damage or obscure the character-defining features to the maximum extent possible. And we're getting sidetracked in this kind of much more broad stroke questions of, do we like this idea? What are the overarching goals of historical preservation?
I agree.
I think this standard right here, I, I don't see how you look at these plans and don't say this is obscuring a character-defining feature along one of the three sides of the building that has it.
It is partially obscuring one character-defining feature of the building. It's not fully obscuring...
On one side.
So we gotta, we gotta also understand what's reasonable here, so...
I don't know, do we want to keep going through each one of these? Okay. Was there any comments on maximum extent possible? I think we're coming back to some of this language, I don't know from a, it's kind of like, what the developer, I think, I feel that it's being proposed too big, where I think, I would, I don't want to speak for either party, but I feel like the applicant would say that it has been reduced in ways. So where do we deem maximum extent possible? Is there any kind of guidance for, like, I think...
Well, can you see the future? Be a good place to start.
Well, yeah, the way I read it is that to the maximum extent possible, it means that the shall not obscure isn't like an absolute, it's, you shall not obscure it to the maximum extent possible. So there's, there's some flexibility and wiggle room, it's not black and white. That's how I read the language.
It alleviates this problem by eliminating the second story, they, this is not the maximum extent possible, right?
If we had a three-story building, we would be obscuring the cornice.
Yeah.
If we have a two-story building, we're below and not obscuring the cornice, to the maximum extent practically.
And there's a regulation in the code, right, that also requires...
Two-story.
Yes.
So, in my view, based on that, they've, they've mitigated the obscuration to the maximum extent possible. They've met the requirement.
Well, if we're assuming that they have an entitlement to do this regardless of... Well, if we're assuming that they have an entitlement to do this regardless of whether it's consistent with the HDLA laws in the first place, sure, but I'm not making that assumption.
Right. And I don't think the law makes that assumption. I think that's part of the determination that we're making as, in our judgment.
Right. The law is looking to make sure that the development of this site plan for this building for an addition or an alteration considers the character and why this building was listed. The postcard was from the front of the building, not that nice corner, directly on. We're looking at the cornice, the windows. Those pieces have been carried into this addition. These are the character-defining pieces from the form, as Natalie has presented, or as included in the submission and was why this building was listed when Mr. Clark wrote that form. So for purposes of this application, we are trying to mitigate any potential impacts while also meeting code requirements, which include building height minimums, that include, you know, these characteristics which we just talked about, which is minimizing, you know, trying to put to the rear, but with at least recess. It's, it's accounting for the fact that there are going to be buildings and infill along Main Street. A big push along, many of our conversations are to close off driveways, right, off of Main Street to the back of buildings, to create the street walls and the frontages and these interconnections. If there's a historic building, does that outweigh closing off a driveway on Main Street? Maybe we'll have that conversation someday. I'm not trying to get so philosophical or hypothetical or otherwise, but the reality of what we're, we're based with or what we're presented with, we are satisfying these criteria. And that's what we're here to talk to you all about. We underst-, sorry.
Nope, same.
Let's keep going.
Yep. So the next one is about height, so I'm just gonna read it, but I don't think we need to discuss it, because I think it falls within the discussion. "The height of any new building facade in the HDLA shall not conflict with the heights of adjacent historic structures on adjoining HDLA parcels." I think we've just talked about height, so I'm gonna go to the next one. "Larger buildings or additions should incorporate significant breaks in the facade. Roof lines generally at intervals of no more than 35 feet." I don't believe this would be classified as a, as a larger addition, and it does not span that 35-foot width.
Agree.
Architecture, so now we're moving into architectural and site elements and their relation to similar features on other properties in the HDLA. So it is not appropriate to disrupt the relationship between a, an historic building and its front yard or landscape, including screening historic, historic properties from traditional street views by high walls or hedges.
What's, what's the value that's being protected here?
The front, the front facade, it seems like it's trying to protect the front facade of a building, your front approach to a building, right? To disrupt the relationship between the historic building and its front yard or landscape. So you're looking at its connection to the public, to the public right-of-way, including screening historic properties from, so you should not be doing that. I do not believe there's any screening or proposed-
I don't see anything about the public right-of-way here. It says front yard.
From its front yard and landscape. I, you asked me what's the intent, so I'm trying to read into this when we're talking about your, the connection to the front yard. Your front yard is facing towards the pri-, is facing towards the street, right? So that's what I'm assuming the intent behind that is, is that you should not be putting anything in front of a historic property that's going to obscure its front facade. That's what I'm reading into this.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to be, wasn't trying to be confrontational, but I read this as protecting an interest in being able to view the actual historic building. I know that otherwise you can grow, you can grow hedges as high as you want under our zoning code.
Is that what I was saying?
That front facade, by the way.
Uh, maybe there's like a 10-foot limitation or something, but otherwise you can grow hedges pretty high under our zoning code.
I'm not clear on the point there.
Um, were it not for this language, there, by my understanding, there would be nothing to prevent you from building, for planting 10-foot-tall hedges that would then obstruct view-
In front of a, yeah.
-of a historic building, because the height, I don't think there is a height limitation on hedges in the general regulations. There's a six-foot limitation on most fences.
But yes, so I believe it is trying to protect the front, the visibility of the front of the building from, from street views from the public right-of-way. So whether that be fences, hedges, or anything else that you would be putting in front of a historic property in its front yard. I believe that is the intent of this one, is that is to be avoided. It's not appropriate. Historic storefronts, porches, cornices, window and door surrounds, or similar architectural features should not be enclosed, obscured, or removed so that the character of the structure is substantially changed. Deteriorated buildings, building features should be repaired rather than being replaced, and if not repairable, should be replicated in design or material or other historic qualities. There's no proposal for the historic structure. New buildings in the HDLA should have a top-floor cornice feature or eve and a first-floor architectural articulation, such as an architecturally emphasized entrance doorway or porch to accent the central body of the building. We're getting there. Architectural features and windows shall be continued on all sides that are clearly visible from a street or public parking area, avoiding any blank walls except in cases of existing walls or potential common property walls. So your window, everything except for the car wash-facing side, right, has windows and features. New HDLA buildings should have a front entrance door facing the primary street and connected to the sidewalk, achieved. Primary individual window proportions shall be greater in height than width, but the approving body may allow for exceptions. But I believe we have greater height than width on all the proposed windows. Any comments? Finished building materials should be of wood, brick. We have brick facade, and what are our materials being proposed, Aria? Is it all, it's brick and metal?
Yeah, so the facade of the, of the addition will be finished with brick, then the rear portion of the proposed addition will have some, finished with a mix of brick and hardy siding, which correlates to the residential buildings along South Brett.
Okay. So I'm not seeing any of those materials in the prohibited kind of language of this. Materials and colors should complement historic buildings on the block. Fluorescent, neon, metallic, or other intentionally garish colors, as well as stripes, dots, and other incompatible patterns, shall be prohibited.
Any thoughts?
Mechanical equipment and refuse containers shall be concealed from public view by approved architectural landscaping elements and shall be located in the rear of the site. I think we talked about the mechanical on the roof being screened, and refuse is shown on the site plan?
I think you missed subpart five.
Sorry?
I think you missed subpart five. Architectural features and windows shall be continued on all sides that are clearly visible-
No, we went, yeah, we went to the-
-in the public area.
We talked about that one.
And the refuse containers are stored-
I'm sorry then.
Did you have a comment on that one?
No.
Okay.
And the refuse containers are stored inside.
And the refuse is inside, okay. That is it for the HDLA sections. So, I mean, I circled the ones regarding, circled one, talking about the historic context and being placed towards the rear or at least recessed. And two, which is in terms of character-defining features, as kind of points that the applicant may wanna consider and, and focus on those. I think we did, you did like a full kind of review, but I think those are the points that-
Yes, we'll focus on those.
-board members are still, some board members are still contemplating.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, board or consultants, before we go to the public?
No, we didn't go through the CMS ones, but a lot of those mirror some of the HDLA ones. And then there are a lot of ones in there that are like numerical, right, like 70% transparency, and those have all kind of been noted through my comment letters throughout the review process and are now addressed mostly via notes on the site plan.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll go to public for public comment.
Good evening, Teresa Kraft. Sadly, public comments have been falling on deaf ears. The proposal to add an annex to the historic telephone building is facing criticism because of concerns about potential damage to the historic landmark and streetscape. If you're gonna adhere that and show that interior wall, aren't you building into that historic building? In tonight's packet, the consultant from HCS proclaims that the telephone building will remain its historic form and integrity. The addition is planned setback from the street plane and will not obscure or overwhelm the existing historic structure and therefore will not interfere with the understanding of the historic resource. I say hogwash. The proposed design shown on tonight's site plan application drawing shows a tiny setback of only three feet back from the face of the telephone building. That is basically from the back of that backrest to the back of that backrest. There are many legitimate concerns about compromising this historic building as it could lead to potential deterioration. Beacon residents and developers are watching this. I'm happy to hear the, some of the pushback here. And its implications on further projects. Degrading historic districts, the overburdens of poorly planned expansions, particularly large-scale projects such as hotels, restaurants, retail, and unaffordable apartments, has already negatively affected designated historic districts throughout our historic city by altering the existing character and potentially violating its established rules and guidelines intended to protect these HDLA areas. The historic telephone building, built in 1907, is older than the city of Beacon. There is a lot of speculation going on here tonight. For 118 years, owners and residents chose not, chose to maintain this as a freestanding building, and that is a fact. That's probably the only fact. Please use the power of authority granted to this board. Please do not allow this leech to affix to this icon. Thank you.
Hello, it's Donna Rubin, 40 Cliff Street. In 1984, the spring of 1984, Prince Charles, now the King of Great Britain, said this about a proposed extension to the National Gallery in Trafalgar Square in central London. He called it "a monstrous carbuncle on the face of a much-loved and elegant friend." Now, we would not put a carbuncle or an addition, a modern addition, on the side of the Parthenon in Greece or Pantheon in Rome. Agreed, this is not the Parthenon, it's not the Pantheon, but in Beacon, it is our Parthenon. It is our, our, our Pantheon, our Parthenon. We don't, we have a deficit of buildings like this that characterize the beauty, the singularity, the character, the specialness of our community. And I don't, I think we've discussed a lot of terms that I would characterize as subjective, terms like reasonable, aesthetic, appropriate. And in my view, and I just, I beg to disagree with you, Chairman Gunn, I don't think that this is a reasonable addition. I think a more reasonable addition would have a greater setback. It would have more sensitivity to the original design. So I do wanna register my disapproval of this addition. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marilyn DeJesus. I live in, uh, now in South Brett Street. And we've been there like for more than 30 years. That building's, it's been taken care of. It's a history building. Let's just keep it like that. We got a lot of people coming from everywhere, looking at this building. I see them taking pictures and everything. And these pictures, they look nice, but when they're gonna build this, it's gonna look awful. There's not gonna be history on this building. Not only us, but I live in South Brett Street. I'm gonna be looking at this ugly building and the back of, back of this building. Imagine that. The traffic that goes there every day. No parking, no nothing. The construction's going on. That building is that parking lot. Been empty, let's keep it empty. This, I disagree with this gentleman that everything should be filled up. Let's have this building, back of this building, empty. Let's keep it like that. Let's keep Beacon the way it is. Let's stop changing this place. You know, we, there's a lot of history here. Let's keep it history. 30 years there, that parking lot's been there for the longest. No one bother it. People park there. The, the city of Beacon cleans the snow, sometimes they put it there temporary. They put this building, where they gonna put all that snow at? As a resident, we have no place to park right now, when we get all these people on weekends. So please, listen to us. We don't need this building. I'm the one that's gonna be driving by this building and looking at this. There's not gonna be no more history in Beacon if we continue building apartments everywhere.
So we didn't get to the party in the back. But there is, I know we've been on this application for a lot, and there's a number of agenda items to follow, but we did wanna sort of, again, speak to some of the comments tonight. For example, the last speaker who lives behind the building. We have considered some adjustments to the rear of the building, both for landscaping purposes and of course to try and account for some more consideration there for setbacks and relationships to the T District and those residences behind the property. So, Aria, with further ado, or I guess without further ado, if you can bring up a plan that we're gonna be sort of hoping to incorporate, which I think responds to some of the comments tonight about green space or landscaping. We're effectively reducing, as you can see on the site plan above, what we had thought to present this evening to hopefully get some input on, is the back of the building. You know, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned some question about what Aria had done to reduce or modify that sort of treatment or the overhang. We've just gotten rid of the overhang and now greened up the back of the building, separating it from the lot from the last speaker.
Yep.
Creating that green space in the back, providing two parking spaces offsite. So again, also now opening and sort of preserving or maintaining full view of the rear of the building. So now we're providing three unobstructed views of the building. The front of the building, of course, we just had an extensive conversation about, but this also goes to mitigate any potential that the rear of the building, which although not treated with a cornice, does have other features that have been maintained and preserved throughout. So now we're talking about three full sides of unobstructed views of the historic building, a reduction in the scale of the addition, additional green space, trying to modify each of these pieces, again, to further the intent of your code, and again, preserve the prominence of the telephone building as it deserves. So we're trying to sort of do this front, back, side, and around, and take, take the full character of this property and building and the adjacency to, again, single, you know, single, single-family homes, to car wash, to other commercial uses, the ama, you know, painting across the street. There's a lot here that relates to this site. It's not just this one corner. It is the collective. So this proposal is to try and address that, to try and give further sort of reduction in scale, minimization. Aria, can you just come at least speak to what you're showing on the visual, just so that it gives more context to the reduction of the building and the scale of the project?
Yeah, so basically, this other plan option sets, you know, the rear of the building addition way back. You know, it, it projects like three or four feet from, from the side elevation there. So there would be, you know, we're, we're getting rid of the whole overhang situation. There'd be another apartment on the ground floor. So there's a total of four apartments. There, there's that garden area filling up the rear corner. And that would help.
Can you show the plan?
Yeah. The site plan?
Yeah. Yeah, of what you're referring to.
And we don't have this. This is just on screen.
Right.
Can you blow it in?
Zoom in.
Yeah.
So we don't have this? What are we supposed to be reviewing?
Right. So what we're, we're getting to, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned, you had some comments about the back of the building. There was comments tonight about, you know, its proximity, the, the extent of the building, relationship to the building behind us in the T District. So we're trying to be responsive to that and foresight, and also addressing comments that came out tonight about ensuring that this building is not obscured to maximum-
I get it. I just wanna know what I'm supposed to be looking at, because-
This, this is gonna be submitted in two weeks.
Okay. So then, I appreciate it. Let's have a quick review, but we've got to move on.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. Yeah, we just wanted to summarize it. So, you know, so basically, we're-
So just, so I'm clear. Whatever I've got here in this packet that you submitted, I shouldn't be looking at?
Yeah.
Or are-
Yeah, we're, we're, we're showing an alternate to, to be considered, you know, just quickly and-
Can I tell you how irritating that is? So you're gonna give us a preview of something we haven't seen yet. And so, does that mean I should completely ignore what you did submit?
No.
So what of what you submitted should I be looking at?
So, Mr. Chairman, we're trying to get, part of what the application had gone through previously was multiple iterations. Aria had presented you with multiple options. That didn't work. So instead of providing five different versions of something that maybe you like, Mr. Chairman, maybe David likes, maybe Len likes this, we came up with a plan that we submitted, which was addressing comments, or worked to address your comments from the last meeting. We prepared this design in the, with the understanding that the conversation would be focused on the factors. So we're viewing the factors that are in the code and the HDLA standards, the CMS regulations, the public comments that we've heard throughout the process. We tried to sort of anticipate another design that we could present based on feedback. So tonight, there were questions about the rear of the building, so we wanted to be able to present to you something that, again, addressed a lot of those comments that were presented to the board, both-
And that's this, not this?
Yes.
That's all I'm asking. So I'll pay attention- So I'll pay attention to this, and I'll ignore this.
We had proposed that, but based on the comments and the feedback, it seems like this would more rightly satisfy the criteria.
Let's keep going.
So the parking's been reduced to two spaces on-site. Landscaping has been increased by that, are you now meeting the 10% with this requirement? And then can you go back to the elevations where they were very, very small, maybe zoom in on that middle one, so we can see what that rear elevation now looks like? Okay. I think there was one in the middle, or maybe it's that one. I'm just trying to...
Yeah, I mean, basically from the street, it's much more obscure, like you wouldn't see it from Main Street.
But you're back to the previous three bays away, no, you're back to the previous architecture of that facade that's facing Brent, but now it's set back further.
Right, and simplified.
It's kind of obscure, can you go to a different one?
Why don't we do this, why don't you just submit what you're going to ask us to review, so that we can review it, and not have to respond here in real time?
Yeah.
While seeing something for the first time? Because I can't even interpret this.
Gotta keep booting Aria, that's why I have that other mic. So purpose of this, Mr. Chairman, again, was try and be responsive to the comments and understand where the design is going, where we're evolving.
I get that, you said that three times already. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Where we're evolving the site plan, so...
So let's review it next month.
Fair enough.
And let's keep the public hearing open.
Can I make just one additional comment?
Yep, of course.
I like the direction that's going in, but I, just in response to the concerns that some board members have about the front facade, the floor plan looks like, you know, through the building where you have the connection, the glass connector, there's the opportunity perhaps to look at lowering the ceiling and roof height, just in that width, the glass, like, so the glass connector can be expressed through the rest of the building with perhaps a slightly lower roof, so that the cornice is more exposed.
Yeah, I think we looked at that, and we looked at some options for that, and the consensus, you know, from that discussion, I believe, was that, you know, it started to take away from some of those, you know, pieces reading across. So we went back to the higher one, we actually did show one that was about, you know, two or three feet lower, but...
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Just a quick one, so is this new design that we're gonna see next time, is that reducing the square footage of the addition in the back? And is it possible, instead of reducing the square footage in the back, to have only a one-floor addition where the store is? Because I understand what you're saying, Aria, we looked at a lower roof height, and what happens is like the panel detail doesn't line up with the main facade, I think that was one of the reasons why you preferred not to go that direction with your design. So, but...
Yeah, and the code requires two stories.
Why don't we reduce square footage by having a little more recess from the front facade, or...
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple things, we're not trying to reduce square footage, we're trying to reduce the impact of the building.
But in the back, I mean aesthetically, there may, there are certain impacts, but the aesthetic impacts, that's the place where I wouldn't, that's where you're gaining the ground.
But the code requires a two-story building there, so...
Right, I mean, I'd suggest that there's a lot of efficiencies that you could gain by focusing this on the rear half of the building. There's a ton of circulation here that's not required, and I think part of, if you used, did that, if you totally rethought the way that you could have more square footage in the rear, you'd have to ask for a, you don't have to have the parking at all, am I correct? Because you wouldn't have retail. And then you would basically just have to ask for forgiveness about the public space or whatever that requirement is, right? I think you have, you have multiple opportunities to reduce or eliminate the impacts that we're concerned about. And I think it has to do with efficiency and good planning, and concern for the public nature of the building.
Okay, what else? That's it, thank you. Okay, I don't want to take too long. We'll go to the next agenda, which is to continue public hearing for subdivision approval and site plan approval, and continue review of applications for subdivision approval and site plan approval. As an intro, for the Main Street and High Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for all being here for my birthday. Beyond that, I am here on behalf of the applicant, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy &amp; Fader, joined by our project architect, Aria Siegel, our civil engineer, Justin Bates, it is my birthday week, it's actually my birthday on Friday. We are also joined by our traffic consultant, Rich D'Andrea of Colliers. As you laid out, Mr. Chairman, we are before you for our continued review of our site plan and subdivision applications for our four-story mixed-use commercial multifamily residential buildings to be located at 45 Beekman and High Street. At this time, I'll just provide a brief overview, as this application has been with you for some time. Since we were last before you in June, we did submit on June 24th our supplemental submission, responding to the board's comments at that time. We're asking the board consider this evening potentially closing the site plan and subdivision hearings for the project. Previously, we had a seeker public hearing on the proposal. Procedurally, just by way of circling back here, at February 11th meeting, the planning board opened the public hearing on the site plan and seeker review, at which time both hearings were continued on the March 11th, April 8th, and May 13th meetings. At the April 8th meeting, the board also set the public hearing for the subdivision for our lot merger, and then at the May 13th meeting, the board issued your negative declaration in the seeker, and also issued your LWRP consisting determination for the project, and closed, of course, the seeker public hearing, and then opened the subdivision public hearing at that time. Both the subdivision and site plan hearings were then continued to June 10th, and then, of course, tonight, July 8th. Amidst the three separate public hearings, over the five months of the planning board meetings, the board also formally referred the matter to your zoning board for a setback variance for the project's parking area. Last month, on June 17th, the zoning board of appeals opened and closed their public hearing on the application unanimously granted the requested variance for the parking area. The latest June submission to your board responded to several minor comments provided by the consultants at the June meeting, primarily regarding our landscaping and our lighting programs for the application. As Justin will review shortly, the landscaping now includes further increased height and size of the evergreen plantings at installation, specifically the proposed Norway spruce and white pine have increased to 10 to 12 feet at installation height from eight to 10, and the giant arborvitae and the junipers have increased from eight to 10 to installation, sorry, have increased to eight to 10 feet at installation, where they were for six to eight at installation. The screen row of plantings along the western side or the High Street boundary of the property, and of course, the pedestrian way, not specifically backyards of residences, have been shifted uphill, closer to the property line for added height at the time of planting, and 11 additional evergreens are proposed throughout the screening area. These updated heights are illustrated along with the existing landscaping on the site section of section sheet 104, that's in your application package. Additionally, the site sections are now included in sheets 105 and 106 of the site plan set, showing those future growth heights for the trees. The landscaping plan has also been revised to add visual interest to the northern portion of the property by altering the row of junipers leading to Tompkins. The plan also further shows the full scope of the existing trees and the additional canopy trees throughout the rear of the property, and the shift of the plantings proposed along the existing retaining wall, further from that wall. The lighting plan was also updated to eliminate certain hotspots, no, I got in my other notes, no lighting bombs, for lowering the proposed wall sconce fixtures for illumination. Add a note, we added a note for the lighting control system, that must have a dimming capability for all lighting fixtures, and then we shifted two of the 12-foot light poles further to the west, further behind, excuse me, the curb line at the entrance of Tompkins to avoid any potential conflicts, we talked about potential for impacts for vehicles. So Aria will also review the rear elevation, which was the focus of our meeting last month, which was revised to increase the design continuity there. So with that, I'll let Aria specifically speak to those details on the trim for the third and fourth floors, with areas of additional brick, the updated windows, changes to the stair tower, and then some additions to the cornice, changes to the stair tower roof, and updated window configurations. And Justin will talk to the landscaping more specifically.
Yeah, so we've focused on the redesign of the rear elevation, you know, based on what we discussed last month. We added sections of brick similar to the front, the details are a little bit simpler because we're not on the street face there. Changed the stair tower design to add more detail, and adjusted the windows on the stairs. We changed the position of the, those projecting bays, so they're not surrounding the stair tower. Changed the window proportions and sizes on the first floor, and we added landscaping adjacent to that brick wall, that's, you know, that's part of the, where the underground garage is.
Aria, is this one your latest?
Yeah, I mean, that's my version of it, I got a, I got a rendering after that was submitted, you know, just, it's the same, it's the same design.
So yes, I should be looking at this as the most recent?
Yeah, yeah, the rendering that's up there is just, you know, the photorealistic rendering of the same design.
I understand. So, but they represent the same design?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we also looked at that, a resident requested, you know, to get a little more detail on behind the High Street building, you know, so you can see that there's landscaping going up the hill, there's landscaping in the parking lot, and, you know, adjacent to the buildings.
Do you have these views during the day?
Uh...
I mean, it's kind of a groovy effect, but it's hard to see what you're intending here.
Yeah, I got one, but I mean, also, part of the request was that, you know, we show how it's lit at night, and what the impact is at night.
I get it, but do you still, do you have them during the day?
Yeah, right here.
Just this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, you know, that was the development since the last time we talked about the rear.
Do you have a rear elevation of the High Street building?
I mean, you're seeing it here, that we have the rear elevation, you know, in line work form, but, you know, but you can also see it on that rendering there.
I didn't, I don't, I don't think I even saw it as a line drawing. Where is that? I was looking for it.
It's on, what sheet number is that?
108.
108.
It's the last page of that architectural set.
Thank you.
Yeah. But, yeah, so the idea was to, you know, generally relate it more to the way that the front of the building was treated, but, you know, there are some differences, because we have the stair towers, the, we don't have the setback on the fourth floor, so it's a little bit different.
I don't, I don't see this one, I see an earlier version of it.
Yeah, the renderer gave us some...
So, am I seeing this for the first time tonight?
Uh, yes. We, because we only have two weeks, sometimes it becomes difficult to coordinate the renderer's schedule.
Okay.
That's in the drawing?
No, it's not, it's different.
That particular one, let me see.
It's different.
Yeah, that's there.
You're showing landscape on the one that I was just looking at, that's not on the one that's in the packet.
Yeah, they added a little bit of the landscape.
So it's different.
Yep.
Thank you.
Again, Mr. Chairman, we realize the frustration with incorporating these details, but these are things that we're trying to do to emphasize the project, and we know you're trying to comment on the application.
You don't need to, I get it, it is what it is, you don't need to justify it, it's just a little frustrating, because I don't know what I'm supposed to be looking at, and especially when, and you've been here in past board configurations where other members of the board has, have become, and for good reason, particularly irritated by the fact that there's iteration control issues, right?
Right.
I get it, there's a timing thing, just when you're presenting something that we're seeing for the first time tonight, make it clear, please.
Sure.
Because I can sort of see it here, but I can see it better here, and if I'm seeing discrepancies, it's frustrating. I don't know what I'm supposed to be looking at, that's my only point.
Thank you. I'm gonna have Justin speak specifically to those inclusions that are in there from the landscaping perspective.
And it's also, it's also hard to be certain when there are multiple elements on multiple drawings that are in iteration, that could be different from one month to the next, but also different between what's here and what's up there. Again, I can't be confident that what I'm looking at is what you're trying to represent as the latest and the most accurate.
We hear you, and we're trying to be responsive to the public comments throughout the hearing process, so we're trying to get you as much material to address that, and I understand what you're saying, and I'll turn to Justin just on that.
I get it, let's just do it in a little bit more organized fashion?
Yeah.
Because we could end up wasting some time.
Good evening, Justin Bates, Colliers Engineering and Design. What I'm gonna describe is what's shown on the package that you have before you. So as Taylor alluded before, some of the evergreen species and, you know, discussions from the last meeting, we upped the initial installation size of those to the next range. Norway and white pines are proposed now to 10 to 12-foot installation size. The green giant arborvitae and the headside juniper are now increased to the eight to 10 feet, where they were prior, six to eight. So that screening or evergreen buffering that we have along that kind of western shared property line with some of the back of the lots on High Street, we did take that whole screening area there and shifted it a little further up the slope. We also looked to utilize it to fill in where the existing trees there, which we did pull over from the tree inventory plan, are really all deciduous. So we looked to do some infill with our proposed evergreen screening up in that area. Generally speaking, before that buffer, that screen area sat a little bit lower on the property, it was just kind of directly adjacent to the parking area. So that was like around elevation 106, as we shifted these up the slope or north, if you will. Now they're probably about an average of elevation 110, some of them are, you know, even higher than that. So, you know, the added installation height, the elevation that it would be placed at helps in creating a more immediate screen in that, in that particular area. We did add additional trees to that as well, 11 evergreens were added to the screening area, and we did mix in some more canopy trees. We used pin oaks up in that area as well, I think I mentioned to the board before, you know, pin oaks, though they are deciduous, they do tend to hold on to their leaves, like even into some of the winter months, so it could, you know, that act as some screening as well. Rear of the building, we'll say the Beekman Building, that kind of green space area that was directly on the north side of the building there, we added a couple canopy trees and some clusters of the headside juniper along the face there to kind of, you know, break that up, as we had discussed last meeting. Let's see, also, just to touch on the lighting, we, so we looked at all the proposed fixtures that were on, the site lighting aspects from the wall-mounted, pole-mounted, and those sconces, they all do have dimming capabilities. So we did mention and noted on the plans that, you know, they would need to have that, and also we worked into some kind of controls for the owner, where they could have control of potentially dimming the fixtures as they basically fit. We adjusted the poles off of the access drive from Tompkins, so they are not in conflict with, you know, potential emergency service or a garbage truck. And then the, there were a couple hotspots from the sconces on the faces really of the Beekman Building there, so we took that, that had, those prior fixtures had lumens of 2357, we knocked that down to 1142 lumens, which was the next step down for that particular fixture, and those are all downlights as well, so...
What fixture type is that?
It is...
G?
Yes, yeah, G, the Caesar hand wall sconces.
Got it, okay.
So they were the, this one was the medium, the prior ones were the large, so that's what we did to get that lowered. So I have it shown.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else? Could you call up drawing four on, or elevation four on drawing A108? It's the High Street building elevation rear. Can you make that big? Zoom in on it.
There's a brick there, but that doesn't reflect the landscape yet.
So what you're telling me is it's a big, long, how many, how many feet? Got to be almost 100? It's a 100-foot-long, one-story brick wall with no windows in it?
No, it won't be seen like that because there's landscaping there, but I need to address that.
No, 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 without landscaping, it's a, it's a story-high brick wall with no...
No, the land slopes into that wall. It's not reflected correctly.
How am I, okay, I need that represented. I need to understand it.
Yeah, I'll take care of that.
Okay? And then the same with, so yes, please clearly indicate how you plan to mitigate what appears to be a large mass, 100-foot-long, story-high brick wall.
Yeah.
Same with elevation four on A107. We talked about this last month.
There's, yeah, there's windows on the photorealistic rendering, but it showed up on the wall.
Yeah, I need to get that.
What am I supposed to be looking at?
Yeah, I'll fix that.
I don't get, I don't know.
Yeah.
I guess we'll know next month. Okay. We'll go through consultants' comments. Anything you want to highlight? We'll start with you, Mr. Russo.
We'd like the applicant to inform us where they stand with acquiring the land from DOT. So there's a number of comments with regards to that. The lot consolidation plan they had submitted, we find that acceptable, although the word preliminary needs to be removed from the title on it. The grading along the rear of the existing stony wall, or the existing stone retaining wall near inlet S7 should be adjusted so the swail's directed away from the bottom of the wall towards drain structure. The swale line behind the sidewalk on High Street should be shifted towards the project site so that there's a flat area behind the sidewalk, and then we just had some cleanup items.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Quinn?
Yep, my first comment was about the DOT land thing, so I'll let that be covered by John's comments. The other one was, at the last meeting, we were talking about the rear elevations, and so I think this has kind of already been discussed a little bit. I was focusing on the Beekman Street building rear elevations, and the one aspect there, really kind of focusing in on the window composition. I understand completely that the back of the building does not always have the same level of detail as the front facades, right? But there was some new introduction of new window arrangements on that rear bottom portion where we're kind of seeing these bays of four separated windows, which we just don't see anywhere else on the buildings. And then also up the stair tower, we were seeing kind of a shape and size of a window that we don't see anywhere else on the building. So I thought that was kind of more drawing attention to those areas, but it may be based on form, so I just wanted the applicant to go a little bit more through those design choices, because I think that's the piece we were focusing on the last bit, was the tower and then that bottom brick portion. It looks, at least in the photorealistic rendering of the rear of High Street, those windows do seem to follow a little bit more of the pattern from the front of the building, so I think it would be nice for continuity if there was some conversation between the window treatments on the front and the back, knowing that they might not get the full same suite of the details. So that was one of my comments, and kind of applied to the tower fenestration as well. And then on the lighting plan, I do appreciate, I think a lot of the previous hotspots were addressed. There's two still spots of kind of really high level towards the corner of the Beekman Street building, but like kind of in between the two entrances, there's two, kind of like an eight and an 8.9. I didn't know if that was intentional, is that, are we trying to highlight something there, or was that just something that was, there just kind of seas of like hotspots around some lower lighting, so I didn't know if that was intentional or maybe just didn't have, hadn't gotten corrected all the way from the lot.
We were explaining that, those are the Ballard lights there.
Those, okay.
So we are using an asymmetrical distribution, so it really kind of throws it forward. Those two, when I look back into the drawing file there, it looks like we left asymmetrical circular.
Okay.
So I think we just have to apply the asymmetrical to that, and that should be consistent with the others.
Okay. Yeah, I assume that. And then, this is in my letter, but I think this just came up when we were going through the landscaping plan I want to address. I know there's a lot of comments, I think, from, from property owners about their rear views of the buildings, and that, I think that is their prerogative to kind of share that, but the planning board is going to be really focused on the views of the building from public right away and from the public street. That's their jurisdiction. So if we could talk a little bit more about that High Street corner and the High Street building, I think both when you finalize the rear facade of the High Street building and that gets unified in the renderings and the elevations, I think that rear portion of the High Street building is very important because that does fall within the HLO. Also, the landscaping there, I just wanted to, if you could walk us through that a little bit more, the landscaping there between the parking that I know you got the variance for, but I think kind of screening that from High Street as much as possible. So I just wanted to understand kind of the heights and what's the intent of the landscaping there to better screen that parking from High Street. So that maybe is addressed now or in future. I just wanted to note that wasn't in my plan or in my comment letter.
Is it addressed?
I believe we can.
You can address it, okay. So we'll, yes.
So that...
I would always highly recommend that you listen to the recommendations of the city's paid consultants.
Yeah, we did.
Good.
So what we have on that stretch there, from the corner, so we're on the Beekman, I'm sorry, on the High Street side, kind of that shared corner with 16 High Street, those evergreens in that corner are part of the ones that were increased in initial size.
Okay.
So we did increase those, and then we have a double roll, we have inkberry, which is a broadleaf evergreen, kind of like a hedgerow that goes across really where we have just kind of like that bump-out area where the parking spaces would back out.
Can we zoom into that a little bit, what we're talking about, just so public can see as well what we're talking about?
Can you tell us how high you expect those shrubs at the bump, at the dogleg?
So you're saying those, yeah, those...
Yeah, that staggered row, that's the inkberry that I was mentioning. So those are easily four and a half to five feet, I would anticipate for those.
Okay.
All right? And then just in front of those, we have an oak.
I think that's very generous, like, under these conditions. Like, I think you typically see them in the 36 to 42 high range. I think you might want to think of something that grows substantially taller for screening there.
Okay, we could look at that. Then as you come to the south of those, we again go into the evergreen trees, the headside juniper, we have some Norway spruce, and then we work into some of the arborvitie there. And then you're kind of beyond the parking at that point, but we do have three canopy trees, kind of on that backside of the High Street building there, some honey locusts, and we have a lower hedgerow of boxwood. You know, again, we're well beyond the parking area at that point, and it also maintains, you know, kind of like a small green area in the back of that building, similar to what we had on the Beekman. I was trying to preserve, you know, those couple similar areas between the two buildings and not just to completely plant those out, so.
Yeah, I think to Karen's point, just that one, that one aspect of those, is it the 13, I think, are they IGS, the 13 inkberry?
Look at that space.
That one, if that could be, because you, you're not having a turnout there, so we don't have to worry about, you know, sightlines or anything like that.
Correct.
So I think a little bit more of a green wall there, kind of, not a wall, but a green kind of screening aspect that is taller, I think, could serve, serve that area there, just of screening that parking that is closer than what the, I understand that the variance was granted, absolutely, but I think the intent of the linkage district is to kind of have the parking not visible from the streets, so whatever you can do there with the landscaping, just screen that a little bit more.
Okay. Okay. Board, any questions, comments to the applicant?
We can, I was going to say, we can address Mr. Russo's comment about DOT, if you want to just plug in a quick note as to where we are on that.
Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
So we've continued conversations with DOT on the land acquisition. We're actually kind of going back and forth on mechanisms for the land transfers. They're going through an appraisal process right now and their final legal reviews, so we are moving along. We're hopeful that in time for next meeting, we'll have something from them in writing that basically says, "We have no objection to the project moving forward, you know, the land acquisition will progress, we have to do final appraisals and closing and things like that to complete the process," so.
Thank you, Archie. Thank you.
And just for that, for the other version of that, what they're looking at right now, meaning that the DOT is looking for, is quite literally how to, who to convey it to, because this is owned by, presently owned by two property owners, because it's the same owner, but it's two different LLCs, so they're asking us to confirm, they want us to effectively merge it before we can merge it with you, so we may have to just potentially deed one of the lots to the, to one of the other applicants, so it's all one applicant for them to convey the land. That's quite literally the current question, is who to sell it to.
Okay. Board?
I just want to say I appreciate the effort that went into the landscape plan. It's good to see the trees that are remaining and the additional, the additional planting material that you, that you managed to put in amongst them. I think that it's looking a lot better.
I appreciate the detail on the staircase tower cornices and the decorative brickwork and the addition of the, another brick bay to the rear of the building in the elevation drawings. I have a question for the board, and that is, you know, from an ARB perspective, are we finished with the clock tower yet?
We're not finished till we're finished.
Yeah, because I feel like it's something we should consider, whether we think it's really working as a focal point as designed and whether it is an element that is kind of, you know, gaining support as a focal feature from the community. You know, is it working, is it doing something overall for the design as it's currently designed? I don't know, I'm not sure it's entirely successful the way it's been designed from material perspective and the clock face and the way that the wing walls are kind of engaging the fourth story, but we talked about the stuff, but so I...
You don't need to tell me this stuff.
Yeah, well, okay. All right, so, but, yeah, I appreciate the other changes on the rear elevation. And I think...
I mean, I think if you, if you have thoughts and ideas that you'd like to share with the applicant, please do.
I don't have recommendations on how to redesign it, but I will say that recently I was driving through Amsterdam, New York, there was a number of industrial buildings of large scale, some which had clock towers on them, and some of the features that seemed to really make them work from a, from a kind of historic fabric perspective was that the clock faces were, you know, set against the brick facade, the material of the numerals on the clock faces was maybe like a patinaed copper, or, you know, they weren't in a very stark kind of panel, you know, and so that if you're, I think there's a, there's a point where you could tip either way into sort of evoking a historic fabric and a really kind of beautiful material, or if you tip too far the other way, you go into the family of clock tower shopping malls, that it's just, it's not really, you know, in a society that probably a lot of people can't even read a clock with hands anymore, it's like, is it, you know, why do we want this? If it's not, if it's not really beautiful, do we even want it? Like, what does it do for us? Is it, what are we actually evoking in terms of era or... So I think it's a fraught, it's becoming, the more I look at it, it's becoming more of a fraught feature, and I think we should...
Certainly tell you if you're going to get to the train on time.
Tweak it.
And there's, there's an aspect of it that I like, which is that there were factories, right? And there were many factories in that area. That's, and one of the difficulty here is like, this is why nobody wears hats anymore, right? Because there's so much diversity of expression in hats, let's say, right? They're very personal, and they can also not work, right? If you don't get them right. So there's, when, when you get feature items like this correct, they really stand out, right? And it's worth the extra effort that you're, that you're hoping that gets put into this. If you don't do it, it can really...
I don't think we have any objection to that. I think we'll take into consideration...
I'm just expressing, yeah, just reinforcing and...
We've done a lot of work on that corner for almost a year and a half.
I appreciate it, and I do think it's improved, right? And I just want to make one passing, and I'll make it short, I'm sorry. It's just in the rear entrance, there's a, the top floor, which is recessed in the front on Beekman, in the rear, it sort of comes right up against the edge, and I feel like if it was made to setback or be less prominent, it would, there's something awkward about the way that's set up on the front right now. That's it.
Thank you.
I just want to add my comment that I agree about the clock. I think it's a detraction from the building at this point.
All right, so we'll go to the public. Speakers have three minutes, and if, we're all getting to know each other rather nicely. If you have already spoken on the matter, there's no need to repeat yourself, it's all in the record. If you have new thoughts and ideas, please do share them. Also, we've received a number of letters, those are all also in the record. We review them all, so with that, I'll open it up.
Hi, Robert Furito, 16 High Street. I've been up here before. I would like to agree with you on, I go through these, the packet beforehand, and I'm expecting one thing, and other things are being brought up, especially a view behind High Street, which I didn't think was, I don't think is in the package, but anyway, that's an issue I've had the whole time, is, is we sit here, we talk, and what we're looking at isn't the proper rendition, they always have something they're pulling out of their pocket, "Oh, we got this little gift for you." But anyways, what I want to talk about is the proposed 12-by-10 trash enclosure on the concrete pad running along 16 High Street property line. The last time I was, well, you have the last planning board meeting, the planning board had asked the developers to please move the, that 12-by-10 trash enclosure, and they said they would, and going through the package and in the notes and looking at all the architectural diagrams, the 12-by-10 trash enclosure has not been moved. It still resides along the property, and also when they're addressing the notes from the planning board, it wasn't addressed and it wasn't shown. So that was agreed upon that they would look at moving that. I had submitted a PowerPoint that, that showed potential places where it could be moved. Do I need to resubmit this and resubmit a letter?
No.
Okay, as long as this is, okay, good. Also, both the proposed 14-by-30-foot loading space and the proposed trash enclosure encroach on the 25 minimum rear yard setback. So that's also an additional reason to move the proposed trash enclosure to a new location. You know, I'm not giving them a hard time on the 14-by-35-foot loading space, but the trash enclosure, since it is, it encroaches into that 25 setback, it gives it another reason why it should be moved, okay? Another thing is, when you look at the demolition notes, there's a point where they are, they are removing the retaining wall in this, over along High Street, and that wall runs right to 16 High Street retaining wall, and there's a, you know, a lot of dirt and stuff like that holding up the High Street wall and holding up that little area. It'd be helpful to see exactly a drawing, what they're doing there, because if they're going in and removing that retaining wall, which is budding up to the retaining wall we've been talking about and needing that grade, you know, setback grade from where they're putting the parking lot in order to keep the wall intact, since it's a freestanding wall, no mortar, I think that that should be addressed, exactly what they're doing and possibly an artis- they're doing and possibly an artist's rendition of, you know, when they remove that, that they're not removing all the soil and dirt and the grading that's going, that's right there. Okay? And the last thing I just wanted to bring up, because it's kind of annoying, and that has to do with, the plans still show the height of the buildings at 48 feet, which we know is kind of a misrepresentation. I went through the whole entire document, and even on the notes on elevation, it states, you know, the elevations have been updated, which they have in the drawings. They still have it at 48 feet, but then they add this additional seven feet, say the Beekman building, seven foot additional on the top. And then you also have this 10-foot for the garage space. So, realistically, realistically, that's 65 feet. But if you go through their proposal, they do not, they hide that number, because they know they don't want the public to know, you know, there's this huge 65-foot building going up. And actually, High Street is 50.8, 50 feet, eight inches, not 48 inches. I don't know why we can't get actual elevations that show the true height from grade to the top from both back and the front. It seems like they're just burying that. You have to actually go in there and add these numbers up yourself. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Teresa Kraft, yes, I've spoken on this before, but I have some things I'd like to continue to add. Could this design submission be any darker? What are we not seeing? This project has been ongoing for over 18 months, and with each iteration seems to deliver the same generic design, lacking relevance to the city of Beacon and its charming Victorian and industrial history. This is an excessive development proposal that will harm the natural balance of its surrounding Victorian homes, neighborhoods on both High Street and Woolcott Avenue. We live in the Hudson Valley. No amount of tree screening is going to hide and shield this massive build from High Street view during half the year, and God forbid we have a year of hungry caterpillars. Recently, we watched a presentation proposal for the Southern Gateway Project planned less than a half a mile from this northern gateway into Beacon at Beekman. During that presentation, the same architect explained how his designs aim to be harmonious, harmonious with the neighbors by incorporating Victorian building characteristics from the surrounding homes. If we can believe that storyline delivered with that submission, this would be the same kind of thoughtful development that should be implemented at Beekman Street, blending with the designs of Victorian architecture of that area. However, it seems we're stuck with a design that fails to address the unique characteristics of historic Beacon at this location. Why is this board responsible for redesigning this proposal? It may have been improved, but it's still not better. Please don't approve this bland box design. It's still cold and sterile, and yes, it does look like an outdated shopping mall. This is not welcoming to Beacon. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Edwin Chong, 20 High Street. I actually submitted these comments to the city earlier today, so I'm not, but I didn't see them in the packets, I'm not sure if they're on the record.
They've been entered into the record.
Okay, but they're not in the packet. Okay, just want to make sure, so I don't want to waste your time if they are on the record.
Yeah, thank you. I read it myself this afternoon. Anyone else? What do you got?
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I think a lot of the comments are, have been somewhat consistent throughout, and we've been working to address those, as the board has mentioned tonight, both through landscaping implementations, enlargement of the plantings, redistribution of the plantings, adjustments to the façades. There's a lot of focus on one particular residence rather than, I think, the actual High Street corridor, which we've been trying to address through these implementations. So, we continue to try and address those comments from a particular neighbor. But ultimately, I think at this point, we'd ask that the board consider closing the public hearing. We are continuing to work through the project design. Obviously, we're gonna take into consideration discussions on that corner of the clock tower, but this has been through the, originally the ARB subcommittee and then through the whole board, but I think we can still continue to look at that corner feature, but that really kind of again gets back into the full sort of architectural design element of the project.
Like I said, we're not done till we're done.
Exactly.
So, you made a request to close public hearing. Any deliberation on the matter, Board?
I've said this before, and I feel like we've heard the spectrum of comments, so I think we could consider closing it. It's been, I don't know if I've heard any strikingly new comments.
Right, and can I say one thing?
Karen was about to make a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'd just like to note the garbage location, you know, especially it's like right in front of the dry, you know, like you pull in the entrance road and you're faced with the garbage enclosure.
So, we did, we did look at that, and we did shift that a little, it was about five feet to the right, trying to address the economy of the neighbor here. It does create the situation that you have there, but anywhere else really just becomes nowhere convenient for the High Street building there. So, we could move it back so it's not so prominent as you approach there. So, that's where that stands.
Yeah, I think maybe next month, we should review how you plan on screening that enclosure. I know it's probably noted or somehow otherwise listed, but let's look at that in detail, because it becomes prominent within that view and that opening.
Sure. The backside of it is planted, has part of the evergreen screen there, so on the north side. But, understanding the view share that you're speaking about.
And is there an issue with the setback, like the fact that it's in the setback?
No.
No, that applies to the building, not to the accessory structures like parking or aspects. I guess, can, do you guys want to address the height at some point in the height calculations? Because it's based on average grade and things like that, and certain projections count in and don't.
Yeah, we'll write it out, just so it's for the record, but-
Okay. That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for the points.
I'm bothered by the clock tower, but I don't hear any public comments about the clock tower, so I'm okay moving forward on that. But if it is being redesigned, and there was comments about, public comments about the clock tower, then I'd be against it.
Okay, thanks. So, as far as closing the public hearing, I'll accept a motion.
Oh, I just wanted to make one-
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin. Yep, yes.
Yeah, and this is not, it's just, I wanted to say how much I appreciated the input from the neighbors. It was incredibly professional, and they actually were providing useful information and feedback, and also like the graphics and other things were really informative. And I felt like it really helped us make a decision, and it almost shouldn't be required for a, that a, that that level of passionate expertise and work be put in, right? Some of that should be taken up and taken care of by the parties involved, but I really appreciate and respect what was done there.
Agreed. Okay.
Chairman, before you call for a motion on the public hearing-
Yeah.
I just want to address one thing with the applicant, because part of the application that's before you was a subdivision application. For subdivision applications, once the public hearing is closed, there's a-
Sixty days.
-62-day time clock that starts to tick.
Sixty-two?
Sixty-two days, yeah. I know, sixty-two.
Wave.
Talk to the legislature.
Wave.
So, yeah, I just want to make-
You're gonna wave it?
I just want to confirm with the applicant that they will be-
It's on the record three times that they're agreeing to wave.
Yes, thank you.
On the record, reflect them also waving.
Thank you.
So, a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion was by Len. And then, yeah, if you're still standing there, I guess you're gonna ask us whether we can consider authorizing draft resolution. Or we can also-
It's not as a matter of approving the project, but to start talking about conditions.
Understood. Yeah, thank you, for the benefit of the public. It's not to necessarily approve it next month, it's to move the process along. So, any discussion on the matter or otherwise a motion to do so?
Motion to draft a resolution.
Motion by Len. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quick, one-minute break, or two. Okay, we're gonna get back to action. Item number three, we are cooking. Public hearing and continued review of application for site plan approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, 300 Main Street. Let's get going. First thing we gotta do is open public hearing, right?
Nope. Yeah.
300. Yes. So, I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening again.
Good evening again. For the record, Taylor Palmer with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, I'm joined by Ari Siegel, the project architect, as well as our project engineer, Mike Bodendorf filling in for Dan Kohler of Hudson Land Design. We are here, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, for a public hearing on the site plan application, proposing to construct three-story mixed-use commercial and residential building on the property. The project will include five separate commercial and retail spaces organized alongside a pedestrian-oriented retail arcade, walkway, not an arcade, but a retail arcade on the first floor of the building, and eight residential apartment units on the second and third floors. Before I turn it over to Ari and Mike to review the site plans and the engineering materials that we submitted with our application, just want to give a quick summary of some of the changes that we did in this site plan update for the benefit of the board, as is detailed in our June 24th submission. The architecture and visual character of the proposed building has been further refined. For example, the gray siding of the western inset on the wall has been removed, and this area is now proposed to be finished in brick, consistent with the primary facade of the building. The dividers in the windows on the upper portion of the retail storefront and the retail window displays within the arcade walkway have been removed, and the vision of the front-facing windows on the upper floors of the building have been simplified to include fewer panes with streamlines, which helps streamline the building design. The gap closure with access panel has been added in the area between the buildings to respond to the comment from Natalie, to prevent accumulation of litter in that area with 304 Main Street. Lighting details, including dimmer controls, have been, aluminium shields have been added to prevent spillover and glare and maintain modern feel of the building. In addition, minor adjustments were made to the footprint of the building, and as a result, the total increase of whopping 84 square feet due to the change of the western inset. Additional and updated construction and engineering details have also been submitted. These design changes are aimed at enhancing the overall experience for residents and visitors to the site to ensure consistency with the architectural design standards located in CMS zoning district. We did also have a chance, excuse me, to review a draft of the narrative declaration, and we did not have any specific comments for same. So, with that, I will go to Ari just to walk you through the updates specifically.
Brief and concise.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, basically, Taylor hit on all of the points, I believe. We updated the design standards narrative as well. We revised the upper cornice height and proportions, and also, I just wanted to mention that Brian, the building inspector, made a determination that the PVC material that we've been using, yeah, like the AZAC trim is acceptable. But, yeah, that's it. Taylor hit on the other points as well.
I have a question, just in terms of the westmost elevation, where you have those, well, yeah, actually, it's represented here as all brick on that west elevation, but it's represented in the elevation line drawing as brick siding, brick. Which one is it?
All brick.
It's gonna be all brick?
Yeah.
Okay, so why does the elevation show still siding?
It's weird, that's the east.
West? Oh, that's east. Oh, forgive me. My fault. Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Are the apartment windows operable?
Yeah, they will be. They're case-mate.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Where's the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Where's the AZAC trim? What, which elements are AZAC? Which elements are AZAC? I'm sorry.
It's the trim material.
Just the trim around the, you know, like the cornice. Instead of wood, we're using AZAC because it holds up better.
Okay. Ms. Quentin?
My comments are very minor. Comment one was just documenting the conversation at the last meeting, that the planning board discussed a reduction in the frontage occupancy requirement to 71%, where 80 is required. At the last meeting, the board expressed this support for this reduction based on the provision of the accessible pedestrian kind of plaza space, and they felt that this was in line with the CMS district. So, I just wanted to note that I agree, I just wanted to make sure that was noted in the record. The building design standards, I also believe the narrative provided was satisfactory, kind of documenting compliance with the CMS design standards. The one aspect I think I wanted to bring up for the board to consider is I know at the last meeting, there was a discussion about adding a little bit more detail to the top-floor cornice to reinforce the historic character of Main Street. So, I think there was, there's some light modifications added there, just flagging that in case there want to be a discussion about taking that a step further.
Thank you.
Mr. Russo? So, the applicant, with regards to utilities, is proposing to reuse some of the existing utilities. They have to do some televising, so when that report gets completed, that should be submitted. We still need to do some soil testing with regards to the drainage out at the site and then preparation of a construction cost estimate.
Great, okay.
Yeah, and I just want to respond to those comments there.
Yeah.
For the record, Mike Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design. We did do some, or the applicant did do that televising of the sewer line. We're looking into options of possibly repairing or replacing that line. We did also do infiltration testing for the stormwater system. The infiltration rate was actually a little bit faster than what we modeled of that, so we will update that report with the new infiltration rate. And to your last comment, we will submit a cost estimate once we have all those changes made and know that everything that's being proposed in the right of way is finalized.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments by the board before we go to the public?
I got one.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the detail. Ari, is this light detail, is that down the corridor or is that on the facade? What sheet?
Sorry, which?
Sheet five of seven. There's a light detail cove that's been added to the drawings?
Oh, yeah, that cove is through the-
That's down the corridor?
Yeah.
Gotcha. There's just a couple of points that you might have here. You label the one up top as a grazer at three inches off. You need to move that to an inch or less from the wall, otherwise it won't graze for you. The next one, I think, is the L5. You labeled L5 as both the uplight coves and the downlight in front of the store façades, right? There'll need to be two different fixtures, there are two different applications, so you have two different types there. But the, I know it says the details aren't quite complete. There's still a bunch of work to do on both of those, to make those work out. The grays are simple, just move it closer, but the other two have significant issues of how that's gonna work. The only other comment I have about it is that it's not relating to the RCP over here. The L, it's just confusing between the L5s and how they work with your coves. So, I'm not quite sure how those line up.
Okay, we'll get that clarified.
Yeah, so is the idea that there's an L5 on each side of the cove?
That's what we were looking at, but-
Because there's like a double line, where it says L5 and there's a double line. What does that signify? So, it's like one going this way and then one going this way?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, if you could just tighten those up between the two of those, between the detail and the RCP, and then the fixture types, you'll definitely need a new fixture type for the downlights if you do that in front of the doors. But thank you for the- But thank you for the detail.
Okay.
Could I make one comment about the lights?
Yes.
The L1 fixture, and I'm just looking at it in the context of your facades and where else it's being used. To my taste, it's a little overly detailed, it's a little too historic-looking, it's, and the rest of the building has a little bit sparser decorating articulation.
You mean the fixture itself?
Yeah, yeah. And the light, I mean, I'm sure there's other ways to maintain the same light with a different enclosure. It just seemed like it was a little bit mismatched.
Okay, yeah, I'll look at that. That's something that the applicant...
Yeah, you don't need, you shouldn't put in a cylinder, you know what I mean? But I'm sure there's many sort of, what do they call it, contemporary mixture.
You're referencing the Escances?
Yeah, the L1.
The L1 wall-mounted, yeah.
Comparatively to L2 and L3, it is kind of like a standout, but, I mean, it's a choice. I'm with you. I agree with you.
I'll talk to the applicant about that. That's something that I believe they selected.
Okay. Any discussion about the cornice, board? I like the detail in the cornice.
Yeah, we did, you know, increase the overall depth and changed the detail, added some steps to it.
That is nice.
We can look at that again, but we did some work on it.
I have a sort of related question, and it's the top of the Oreo window. Could you consider doing something to make that pop a little bit more, because the, all the details in the, sort of the belt line? And the top of the Oreo looks a little bit frail compared to the cornice now, which I like, it's got more stuff going on, and it's, the proportions of it I like, but I think the top of that Oreo window, if it was beefed up a little bit, would be kind of cool.
And I like the spandrel articulation. I think that's an improvement, right?
Yeah.
And the whole thing, just vertically, I think that that's, like I said, that's, it's like a hat, right? You have this feature detail, and it's sort of like, it all fits, you know?
Sorry, what are the tick marks on the lower portion of the cornice? Are those intended to be articulations?
Yeah, they're reveals.
I see. And then I see a shadow line at the, you know, the sort of the transition of the lower part of the cornice to the brick. Is that intended to stand off?
There's a little bit of a overhang there, yeah.
Does it, or does it return flat against the brick? How does, or is it, it looks like it's sort of standing proud of the brick. I'm just not sure how exactly...
You mean the part of it that's right above the brick, or?
Right above the brick.
Yeah.
And set between the pilasters of the corners?
Both. So there's the two corners, right, that are proud of the infill with the windows?
The gaps between them.
Yeah, and it looks like, it looks, it's just the rendering looks, makes it look as though the cornice stands off of the brick.
Let me look at that, because I think we were also using some kind of a gap in there for light.
For lighting? Yeah, just, is there a detail of that?
No.
Not a big detail, but I can...
If you could provide a detail, just so we can understand how that works, especially if there's integrated lighting, yeah. I know Mr. Vimean would like to see that.
That'd be nice.
Yep. Thank you, okay. Sorry, did you have something?
No, you hit it.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go to the public. Anyone here who would like to share their comments on this? Please do.
This is Becky Eden Aaron-Cuttry of 10 North Cedar. Our property butts the backside of 300 Main Street. We have some general concerns about the massive scale of the project, the inevitable construction noise, and our invasion of privacy, but we're mostly concerned about some specific issues that have not been talked about very much in these meetings. First, the trash enclosure. Right now, the plan has it running along where our back fence is and where our backyard is. We've spent years making improvements to create a peaceful retreat from Main Street on our private property, and our deck, patio, and home are within feet of the proposed trash enclosure. Placing it so close to our living quarters creates a potential health hazard. We've already dealt with a significant amount of rodents in our backyard due to neglected properties in the area, and if you add trash for 13 units to the mix, it's going to get a lot worse. In the past, we've worked with the city and the previous owners to remove the forest of weeds in their driveway and partial garage, but the problem persists today due to a lack of maintenance. It appears the only time in the recent past that it's been cleaned up was to take photos for the realtor. If the new owner isn't maintaining the space now, how do we know they'll take care of it when the new building goes in? Our dog's been sprayed by skunks, and we've seen a family of raccoons, plus rats, mice, groundhogs, and opossums near that site now. Disease-carrying rodents and trash odors from 13 units will ruin our backyard and impact our quality of life. We would like there to be an indoor refuse room in the building, similar to what 344 Main Street has now. It's an interior space that's attached to the building behind the closed and locked door, which is where all the trash lives. We would like, we're wondering if there's a possibility of doing something like that here. Eight apartments and five businesses is simply too many units to have refuse bins against our private property. We also have concerns about the courtyard. Since 2020, we've experienced well-documented late-night noise issues on North Cedar from nearby businesses with patios, and we're very concerned about another outdoor area being added so close to our home. What are the hours of this courtyard, and is it truly public and is accessible to everyone? Is there an option to put it behind a lock gate and close it down after business hours? Can we restrict what kinds of businesses go in the building to assure another bar doesn't get built by our house? A bar or even a restaurant nearby inevitably means late-night noise, people smoking outside, cigarette and alcohol litter in our yard, and even more noise ordinance violations. And then one other concern is traffic and the deliveries that will be coming to those residences of 300 Main Street and the businesses. North Cedar has already many documented traffic issues from vehicles delivering to nearby businesses, and also the parents dropping their kids off at the, at Quman. The current number of trucks on our street on a daily basis is alarming, and adding five businesses means that more trucks might end up illegally parking around the corner of North Cedar, blocking driveways, and creating a potentially dangerous lack of egress. Despite working with the city council to establish a part-time loading zone on the corner of North Cedar and Main, we're still experiencing traffic, trucks double parking, and multiple cars piling up on our one-way residential street. The loading zone times are currently being constantly ignored, our cars are still parking there, and the delivery trucks are forced to park on North Cedar. Adding more businesses that will likely require delivery truck traffic seems like an accident waiting to happen, especially with so many children crossing the street to enter an accident their tutor. Thank you for your time, and we strongly urge you to address our health, safety, and privacy concerns with this project so we can all coexist harmoniously.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Jeff Warner, the owner of 296 Main Street, and I just wanted to go on the record of just being concerned about the construction period, just for noise and dirt and such, for the impact on my property and my tenants. I have had a conversation with the property owner, and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to manage things as it goes. Just want to be on record that it is a concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm a co-owner, along with my wife, of Happy Valley Arcade Bar, which is right next door. Have a similar concern to our landlord, Jeff, regarding construction, since we have a unique setup where our courtyard is right on Main Street. Just wanting to understand how long construction will be, and if there's anything in place to essentially not have, you know, a year-long construction where our tenants, our customers, patrons, would not like to be outside, because that could be the difference between us surviving or not. So just want to go on record with that, and, you know, happy to talk to the owners about that. The other thing is, once you get ahead of any potential concerns of the new tenants moving in, they essentially will be moving in on top of a bar. So would also like to talk to, I'll talk to Ari and the new owners if there are any, you know, soundproofing, because we want to make sure that, you know, we are taking into account the community. Any times that issues have come up with our neighbors, we've always done the best we could to try to mediate that and take their concerns into effect. So it is something that I am a little concerned about, the courtyard being right there. But, yeah, just wanted to go on record with those two comments.
Thank you.
Who's your neighbor, please?
Johnny Coughlin.
John?
J.O.H.N. Coughlin, C.O.U.G.H.L.I.N.
Hi, I'm Victoria Neville. This is Joanna Neville. We're trustees of the property on 304 Main Street, which is next door to this proposed structure. We just wanted to get a little bit more understanding and convey some concerns about what is being proposed. We're trying to better understand and don't yet understand the space in between what our property wall would be and what the new build would be, and if we'd be able to access all sides of our building. Additionally, our tenants all have windows on the side that would be adjacent to the structure, so what would happen to the, you know, how much space is there for them to be able to open their windows, get air? Are they gonna open their window and be staring at a brick wall? Those type of issues. Because of the size and scale of the building as compared to ours, we're concerned about light pollution going in through the windows of our tenants within our building, and also privacy concerns, because the back of our lot is a grasp in the area where our tenants do spend time outdoors. We also have a parking lot back there, and so what does this construction look like, and how does it impact the people that live on this property and have a life on this property with their families and their animals? We're concerned about the just impact of human bodies with five potential commercial locations there, and the foot traffic that could spill over onto our property, as it already is kind of a sneak-through from the back street to Main Street. We aren't really looking to encourage more of that in the future in any way, shape, or form. There's also a lot of flooding issues on this part of the street, so our property, actually, we spend a lot of time and a lot of money and a lot of resources building up sod, gravel, dirt grass, because the way the property at 300 currently sits, when there's rain or issues, the water tilts down onto our property, and we tend to be a sinkhole for the water coming in. With this building being constructed, we're concerned that there's a lack of awareness that that problem already exists, and what could happen to make it worse, where our backyard becomes a swamp area? Because we're kind of small with something large being built, we want to make sure we're on the record just saying, is that being looked at? Because the property line on that side of our building, we own very little bit of property there. So we don't have a lot of options, but what does happen there can really negatively impact the rest of us on the far side of the street. And it does sit higher. Our property is lower.
300 sits higher than 304.
And the front facade of 304 is a building that was built in the 1800s. It's a really old property, has significance, historical significance, you can learn about it at the Beacon Historical Society, and we are trying to keep it from sinking, not encourage help to get it to sink in the future.
And just a little privacy.
And there are privacy concerns.
A three-story building facing our backyard would have everyone looking into my backyard, so what's the point, I feel, if I have everybody looking over at me?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, I'll leave after this. It's been a long day. Just please help stop this mass overdevelopment projects on our Main Street. It's becoming increasingly difficult to envision the future as we navigate our already overcrowded thoroughfare. Driving with our eyes closed is not an option. It's disheartening to witness our once-beautiful historic city transforming into a chaotic scene. This proposal will impact the quality of life for every homeowner resident that lives within the area of Main Street, especially those families that live on North Chestnut and North Cedar. A retail outlet and two, and eight two-bedroom apartments can literally transform into 100 people chattering all day over your backyard fence. Show some compassion for the residents of Beacon. They are your neighbors. Many residents are requesting that the city create a separate Historic District and Landmark Preservation Commission. I hope that, as our planning board, you get behind this request and share the magnitude of the work before the city. It's time to impose a building moratorium going forward. We need to begin working on our new comprehensive plan for 2027 without delay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Couple of questions for the applicant. As far as, as far as the adjoining property line to the building, the two-story building to the east.
304.
Thank you. The way I'm interpreting what you're proposing here is that you're creating a low-wall planter type situation, and then nothing above that. Is that right?
I'll let Ari speak to it, but yes.
Yeah, the site plan up now, there's a, there's a low-wall planter on that side.
Yep.
It's gonna have like climbing roses and a trellis that goes up, so...
So that leaves, that leaves the fenestration along 302 open to air and light. Is that right?
Yeah. 304?
304.
304.
Yeah.
The neighbor. I'm sorry, what's your question? Why are you asking me?
I'm trying to help you. Sorry. I should, don't help me, just say that to me. Len, do not help me. There's, because 304 has got the brick front portion of the building, and then it looks like a white-sided addition on the back of it, and some of the windows, it looks pretty low on that, yeah. So I think I'm just trying to bolster what you're, what you're asking about. Please take a look.
Yeah. We're, you know, the solid part of the building does not cover windows, so we're making sure that the, those windows are clear.
Because you're in the center of the arcade, it's open.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
But screened with the planting.
Thank you. And then...
For the, sorry.
No, please.
For the rear part at the end of the arcade where the building extends to the property line, where, like, in relation to building number 304, is that beyond their building? Like...
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it goes further back than, yeah.
Okay. So like where their shed is now?
Do you want to point? It's on the plan. You guys want to point out on the screen where the end of the 304 building is? So it's clear.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good one.
Yeah, it's beyond that shed.
Yeah, it's shown right there.
It's beyond the shed. Looks like it goes all the way back. Property line.
Yeah, there's a low fence, there's like a low, if you look on the street view, there's a low fence in the back behind the buildings.
Property line goes all the way back. So it matches the property depth.
Okay, that's helpful. And then the other question, this is something I was thinking about, looking at this earlier today, that your rear neighbor just highlighted it relative to the proximity of the trash enclosure to the property line. You know, my thought was, if that was my backyard, I'd be a little concerned. And so we heard that expressed. Is there any way feasible you could consider moving that trash enclosure, or even bringing it inside?
I just want to double your point here. If I was the back neighbor, I'd be livid right now, thinking that there's gonna be one, two, three, four, five, six trash bins of who knows how you're gonna take care of that. I mean, you gotta move it.
Yeah, no, we'll...
My position is, you gotta move it.
Yeah. We'll look at how to do that and get it off the back fence, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, board? We do have the draft secret neg deck that we can discuss. But do we need to close public hearing before we do that? No, I didn't think so.
No subdivision.
Any thoughts? Secret neg deck? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion.
That looks reasonable to me.
Is that a motion?
I didn't want to cut everybody else off, you know? I want to give people time to go.
And to the point of the training session from at the beginning of the meeting, which seems like three days ago.
like three days ago. The, the narrative portion of the neg deck goes through each of the impact categories and describes based on information in the record why there's no significant adverse environmental impact for each of those categories.
Motion to approve the neg deck.
Motion by Karen?
Seconded.
Seconded by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We could also discuss if we'd like, closing the public hearing. But let's discuss it.
I think we should just hold it until we see some of the questions that have been raised tonight get answered. So maybe keep it open for next time.
Agreed.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, good. Is that all, is that all for tonight?
So we continue the public hearing to August.
Sorry?
That's it for us. Yeah, just continuing, just noting for the record, continuing the hearings for August. Yes, thank you.
For the record, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move then to public hearing and continued review of application for site plan approval residential accessory dwelling unit 21 High Street, submitted by Henry Zook. We are. We're starting to cook with gas. So I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, this one's good.
Motion to open a public.
Motion by James.
Second.
Seconded by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, good evening. This is refreshing.
Refreshing? It thinks it's refreshing. I'm David Freeman. We'll hopefully figure out what's going on here in a second.
Did you happen to hire Taylor Palmer as your attorney?
It's not a requirement. Apparently.
Oh, but you do have R.A. You've got half that.
Thank you.
I didn't think about the garbage man. Who's missed out if somebody filled that next to me?
Oops. That's very refreshing.
Like it's not really, it just says like owner or something, it doesn't say residential.
Basically said you can't show structures within a given distance.
Yeah.
Where's IT? Why am I IT?
How does that happen?
It's a terrible idea.
Here he comes. You made him come out of his closet.
There we go.
Did I fix it before I walked away?
That's funny.
It was me?
It was you. Great job, great job.
When in doubt, unplug it and plug back in.
You know, we could have had this application done by now.
Probably. I can just start talking.
Why don't you? You know, we have your materials, so.
So I think the only question was from last time was, sure, go ahead. So David Freeman, the architect for the project, I'm waiting for the picture of the front elevation to come up.
We have it here.
Okay. So I think the only question from last time was the front elevation. The windows are all being replaced. Lovely single pane glass wood frames. The only change really to any of the elevations is going to be, yes. The front door, which right now is an eight-foot wooden door, and we will be replacing with...
So you're showing all of the windows except for the window in the front elevation as what appear to be casement. Is that right?
The only, they're all going to be fixed windows. They're all, the way, the way the space works, they're all upper-level windows except for the rear-facing window, which will be a casement. They all are, they are not, they're all single pane, single glass windows right now. And the actual, the triangular piece you see on the front is actually applique. That's actually a rectangular window inside. So we'll keep the outside true. What else would you like to know? So standard double three-foot doors, six foot eight inches tall, and keeping with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll go to our consultants. We'll start with Ms. Quinn.
My comment, my last comment was about the door. Previously, it was a single door, and so now moving to the double door is much more in line with the existing kind of barn style door. So I supported that change.
Are you salvaging those old barn doors?
Hmm?
Are you salvaging those old barn doors?
Yeah. If you'd like to stop by.
They're nice.
He is a bit of a hoarder, the owner.
Is he?
Repeat that.
No, maybe he'll keep them. Mr. Russell?
So I just have a few comments with regards to construction details. The sheet shall include a construction detail for monolithic curb and sidewalk. You're going to be digging through it when you're installing services out to the roadway.
All right.
There's going to be details for that. Item four, or specifically DOT item number 30412 is to be used for backfilling of the trench from the bottom, right to the bottom side of the pavement. And then with regards to the saw, we need to note the tapping saddle you're using. So that should all be noted on there also.
John? Board, questions, comments? Okay, we'll go to the public. Anyone here to comment on this application? Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by David. All in favor?
Aye.
We also have a draft resolution to adopt that we can discuss, or otherwise enter a motion to, to do so, to adopt.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by James. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you for your clear narrative again of compliance for the ADU.
We're going to move to continued review of applications for subdivision approval and site plan approval residential five-unit multifamily dwelling 193, 195 Main Street.
I know James missed me. Good evening. Taylor Palmer, Cuddy and Vader, on behalf of the applicant, Kosovo Properties LLC. Both the owners are here this evening. Tonight I am joined by our project architect, R.A. Siegel, as well as the project engineer, Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design, and our traffic and parking consultant is Rich DeAndrea of Colliers. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we are before you this evening in connection with our continued review of our site plan application and a lot merger application begrudgingly, proposing to install a three-story multifamily building containing five residential apartment units and to merge two lots into one to make up the premises. Before I do turn it over to R.A. and Mike and Rich to review our site plan study, our parking study, I'll give you a quick overview of the updates to our application since our last appearance in June. As we detailed in our June 24 submission, the visual appearance of the proposed buildings has been refined to pay particular attention to the HDLO and CMS design standards. Specifically, the additional architectural details have been added to the previously blank brick facade of the building. The stair tower on the building has been modified to further differentiate the building's facade. The opening to the building lobby has been modified from the straight concrete lince to an arched opening to soften that approach. And then translucent glass will be used at the building entry area, has been defined with mullions, and now includes built-in bench and planter. I'll have R.A., of course, speak to that more specifically, or at least visually. In addition, Rich will talk to the specific traffic and parking analysis that demonstrates that the project will not result in any noticeable impacts to the traffic operating conditions in vicinity of the property, and that the off-street parking provided for the project conforms to the city's regulations. And then, of course, that additional demand for the project can be satisfied by on-street public parking, which is in proximity to the property. So I'm actually going to switch it up. I'll have Rich to speak to that issue, and then I'll have R.A. speak to the plans. So, Rich?
Good evening, again. So we, our traffic and parking assessment was pretty straightforward. As you can imagine, a five-unit residential development is not going to generate a whole lot of traffic. So we didn't really see any significant traffic impacts there. On parking, the code permits a maximum of five spaces for the development. We're providing two. So we looked at some other existing residential uses, specifically the existing 193, 195 buildings, and how many vehicles are currently being parked by the four residences that are in there. So there's four residences. Each one has one, one vehicle. So you're equating to a one-vehicle-per-unit ratio. I want to apply that to what we're, the five that we're going to have in the new building, that'd be five parking spaces. So kind of consistently your code. We did also look at IT previously in a prior submission, and that did identify some maybe slightly higher numbers for parking up to six spaces. But regardless, we're all kind of in that, in that range of five to six spaces. We also did do observations of the on-street parking and the, some of the public lots that are in that vicinity within the 500-foot radius. And at the lowest occupancy time, or sorry, the highest occupancy time, the lowest of available parking, we saw 153 spaces available within 500 feet of this site. So more than enough parking to accommodate that. And actually.
Please tell me where those parking spots are.
Sure. If you go along the Wint Street, there's a lot of parking available.
New fire park.
Well, you gotta, the further you move away from Main Street, there's always more parking.
Yeah, I just walk from my house.
Well, I. It's literally four blocks. So I, um, and in fact, I mean, when we look at the fact that we, we're providing two on-site and we need five, three spaces, really maybe four, because one of them's handicapped on-site, so how that works out.
How many, sorry, how many units are you proposing here?
Five units.
Five units with two parking spaces?
Two spaces, correct.
Are the existing four spaces being lost?
No. Those spaces are all parking, there's no parking for the residents on the site right now.
So.
They're all currently parking in public spaces.
So the pictures of cars parking behind that building?
Yeah. Who's parking there right now?
There are cars parked back there.
From my understanding, with the applicant, there's nobody from the residences that are parking there back there.
We had discussed this, and maybe it was a prior meeting, we had mentioned there was a florist that had been previously in the, or had been in the space and may have utilized that parking, or for drop-off for deliveries. But we are going to address, we know Natalie has presented that, her comments with respect to deliveries, where they come from, and talking about how we might get that into the site, because again, site operations getting into and out of this area. The parking area is also something that we're prepared to discuss. So that, I guess, is why old aerials would show that. But again, residents do not have parking spaces for their units. It's not in a lease or otherwise.
Those are all adjacent parcels that are accessing.
Yeah.
Yep, good point.
At the last meeting, I had asked you about parking behind adjacent buildings.
Yes.
Indicated that it looked like people were getting access
Correct.
To the rear of this property. So what's the deal with that?
Good question. And there is sort of a, it's just happening. There's no, from our research, there's no recorded easement to suggest that they have access, meaning there's two, two units that would, that you point out, or that we would point out or highlight it there. You have Eight Cliff Street, which is the property where you're right against the entrance, you know, if you're coming off of Main, turning left, turning right onto Cliff, and then past the parking lot, past the buildings, going into the site. That's Eight Cliff. They are, they are presently parking, I think, a vehicle behind their building. And then there's also a garage that I think effectively straight back if you drive into the facility. And while they don't have actual easement rights that are recorded, I think they certainly have been utilized or used. So that, those are, I think, the two properties that access it. Whether they should have access, can continue to, could make legal arguments for that is different than what they're doing, which to your point would suggest that they're using it, right there.
So what you're saying is, is that there shouldn't be any parking back there. Sometimes there is, but I get it.
Yeah, no, that actually wasn't what I was talking about at all. What I had pointed out last time was that the two adjacent buildings going east on Main Street appear to be getting access to parking lots by driving through here. And I went there, one of those buildings is at a apartment building. Arguably, if they didn't have that driveway, people could access the parking spots by going through that tunnel with the curb cut. That's kind of what I wanted to find out about. That wasn't in any of the submissions.
Yeah. That's the next, that's the next building down. That's the, actually, the same owner as Six Cliff Street, I believe, that has the parking lot through the archway? Yeah, that's, that's disconnected from this entirely. There's a whole building, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, that's, they're not, they don't connect. You can't connect through the archway into our site.
I rode my dirt bike right through there.
I knew it.
There's no other place to get in and out of.
So the.
I'll have the, I mean, I can have the applicant speak to it just for.
I think the point here, though, is that.
There's nothing parking there present. They shouldn't be parking, well, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
There shouldn't be parking there presently, right?
Right.
So regardless of whether you can get through there with your dirt bike, whether somebody is parking there, that's not the intent.
And that's not the applicant's property that is before the board. Six Cliff Street owned, the same owner owns that building and that parking lot behind the arch, but that's not this applicant.
I think the bigger point here is, though, that we're creating, we're, we're proposing five units and only providing for two parking spots. So we should discuss that.
Which is in the range of the code, right.
Huh?
Which is in the range of what the code prescribes.
There's.
It's a CMS-owned property. It's just the building, it's behind the, the.
There's also discretion by the planning board.
Sure.
Yeah, and that's.
So we'll, we'll talk about that. So let's just pin that for a second. I can't believe I just said that. So, but we will come back to that, because there's a lot of things to discuss here. But I first want to get to, because I think some of the observations by our consultants might have a preemptive effect on conversation.
Indeed.
Further conversation. So let's, let's talk about Natalie's review.
Do you want the visual from R.A. first?
No.
Got it.
I mean, when we get to it, because we're going to talk about the aesthetic, but that's, that's why I think it makes more sense to talk about this. One of the, one of the observations that Natalie has made relative to frontage, and I think it's an important part of the conversation here.
Yeah. So my comment number one, I do appreciate that you provided the narrative addressing CMS and HDLO regulations. And I think through that, I came across two shaws that are just worth discussing. So the first one, I think that Chair's alluding to is B, one B in my comment letter. And in the section in the CMS district, it says, "Building shall have a front entrance door facing the primary street and connected to the sidewalk." I think your response in your comment letter was that, okay, well, we're not facing, we're not fronting on a street. I think there's a problem worth being discussed there because it says shall have, shall have a front entrance on a door. So the proposed residential entrance faces the rear of the lot and lacks a sidewalk connection. And so my comment to the board is that we should determine whether this configuration satisfies the code and warrants modification. So that shall is pretty strong language there. The other shall, and then maybe this is the rendering you were talking about, right, talks about, also in the CMS district, "Architectural features and windows shall be continued on all sides of the building that are clearly visible from a street or public parking area, avoiding any blank walls except in cases of existing walls or potential common walls." So a few comments there, but I think most importantly, the northwest facade, which may be visible from Main Street or Cliff Street lot, appears largely bank aside from the balcony cutouts. And I point to the board to discuss with the applicant whether additional articulation or material variation can be incorporated to mitigate the blankness. Alternatively, the building may need to be set back from the lot line to allow compliant window placement and design treatment as required by code.
Those are two important observations.
So those are the two. Let's stop there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go to the first one first, and then I'll go to the second one second.
This, I'm so curious. I can't wait to hear what you have to say about that first shawl.
So the first one, we already addressed, the shawl, because there's an existing building that faces Main Street. This is an additional building in, that we're proposing. We're proposing a new standalone building. There is a, on the property, the one lot we're developing, the building, the apartment building, mixed-use building, already fronts facing, there's an entrance off of Main Street. It says a, the building. It doesn't say all buildings, it's the building. We have a building on Main Street, we're proposing a building behind it. We've done this. So for purposes of our, we'll, we'll speak to Brian about it, as it's a building inspector determination with respect to the shawl, not, not a board discretion item. So we'll speak to Brian about that particular issue.
It doesn't say the building in the code. It says buildings. I just want to clarify that. I think you just said it says the building, but it says.
Right. We'll speak with, but our position is that it's not, it's referring to in this instance, there's a building facing, that has access to Main Street. It has frontage on Main Street. It accesses a curb.
Are you talking about the existing historic buildings that actually face Main Street?
The, that's on this property, yes.
This looks, this looks like two lots.
The only lot that's being merged in is the little connector out to Cliff Street. The only lot that's being merged in is the little connector out to Cliff Street. The lot itself, so, I mean, if you look at the site plan, it's on the screen, the gray little quarter, this is all...that's one lot, and then the rest of this is all one lot. So the existing building fronting Main Street. The new building is being proposed behind the existing building that provides access and frontage on the Main Street.
Yeah, but it's a separate building.
Yep. But we'll discuss that issue with Brian specifically. We'll have to get a determination on that specific issue. And then the next part will probably upset the chairman, but I'm gonna have RA show you the visual that probably is not in your package.
Oh, good.
But it's, again, addressing a comment that was presented in the memorandum that we just received.
Here's the thing...
Just received.
It was addressed in the last planning board.
I know, I know, it was, yeah.
Here's the thing. Believe it or not, we actually spend time before these meetings reviewing this stuff, reviewing the packages. Why the hell, as a volunteer, am I reviewing this stuff, spending my volunteer time reviewing it, when you come here and you've got something entirely new and say, "Don't look at that. Look at this."
I hear you, Mr. Chairman, but with all due respect, we have...
It's a waste of our time.
It's not a waste of the time. We're here presenting to you an application and a proposal. There's a comment and a question. We did provide those submissions, but we also added an additional picture of that.
So then we'll review it next month. I'm not gonna respond to anything that you're showing us the first time tonight.
Okay.
Now, can I suggest something, John? Is that our consultants just start being rigorous about not allowing these sorts of... You know, more rigorous about being consistent in the way that things are presented, right? We have to say no sometimes. We have to...
We stopped submitting supplementally what we had done previously to ensure that you had it in your package. As we provided to Mercedes or previously, we would have provided that in advance, but we were told not to do that, so we stopped. This was available before today, but I know it wasn't available for the submission deadline. So again...
All I wanna know is that what we're reviewing prior to the meeting that we're responding to, that our consultants are responding to, providing their review letters for, is the same thing that we're looking at when we're talking with you, when you're standing in front of us. Again, it's...it's irritating. Because, you know, we've spent the time reviewing this.
Yes, and this is an elaboration or extension of what has been submitted. But if you don't wanna look at it tonight, we'll submit it to you supplementally. The idea was to present it to you, to give you a sense of what you had requested. We wanted to present...we are here tonight to present to you the material. Doesn't...it isn't always going to be something that...some things come up, we get there. We have these things that we implement. Sometimes we respond to comments when we get them.
I don't know. Board, do you wanna see the new stuff?
I don't. I wanna be rigid about this, 'cause I am constantly held to a professional standard of version control, where we have one thing that's reviewed. That is...that's a process that's done with a certain...
All right, anyone else?
But then these meetings would be static. We'd be...what we submit our letter, then we shouldn't come to the meetings, right? We just submit the...so all due respect, I hear what you're saying. We hear the frustration. Obviously, it's being represented. RA is hearing you. It's gonna be done timely, as we traditionally do. These things are trying to help that process and help you envision it a different way. But if you don't wanna see it, then we understand that, and we'll only submit it. But we're trying to get you an idea of where it is, because if it does inspire some commentary, we're here presenting this application.
You've at least piqued my curiosity, because quite honestly, what I'm looking...what I've been looking at, me personally, as far as what's been submitted and the aesthetic of this building, it's got a real identity crisis. So you got me curious. Is it any better? Let's look at it briefly. But don't expect substantive conversation and response back.
Not at all. Thank you.
I don't know. Am I out of line here?
No.
Let's just...let's present it and get the benefit of the presentation.
Yeah, no, we'll submit the stuff for the...for the next month, but if you wanna just get a quick...
I mean, I don't wanna sound like David Burke, but...
No, basically, we looked at some details and proportions and made some changes to the corners, the windows. Upper windows are different than the lower windows. We modified the arch.
Again, you've got a lot of the main features here in shadow.
I know, it's very Gothic.
Okay.
Well, you can't see the stuff you're telling us is new, 'cause they're shadow.
Right. Again, with the...
This is from back here.
There's many ways to explain things, and some of them are clearer than others. And I'm sorry I used the word deceptive before, but it's perhaps not as clear.
Yeah, just trying to give you a flavor of what we're gonna submit.
Oh, sorry.
So, you know, so we did make some changes to the thing that you did see submitted, and we're working on developing that. So that's just a little bit of a...
I'll just say this. It's...it's...I'm not characterizing it one way or another. It's evolving.
Yeah.
That's a fact. However, you still have those, what I would consider useless balconies on the west elevation.
We need those for...there's bedrooms behind those. There's little doors or windows there.
There's gotta be a different way to handle it.
Well, the...
Can you look at it?
The other way would be to set the building back.
Are those... Okay.
Yeah. But this is also...
You're also...you're also very close to your neighbor on Cliff Street.
Yeah.
So you're looming over them.
Balconies are looking down into the backyard of Cliff Street and their proposed roof deck, which we're gonna hear.
Yeah, I mean, who wants...that's right in their bedroom. So there's that. And then, I don't know, go back to the east elevation, elevation facing east. Yeah, that needs work. That's all I can say.
Yeah.
Fix it.
Do you think those columns could be helped out with by engaging with plasters or something?
I'm not gonna design them.
Not those two, but the other ones?
I think...
'Cause it's like these brick legs coming out of it.
It's a blank wall, basically, with...again, it's this identity crisis. It's...
And can I say one thing about this?
Yeah.
I think that there's a number of unintended consequences from recent changes we've had in our codes that even allowed this to be presented before us, right? The limits on the parking restrictions and some other things. This lot was never intended to have a building built like this, I think. It doesn't seem like an appropriate place for residents in the middle of the lot with almost no access to it, right?
Kevin, I wanna make sure you're heard, but the code is the code right now. So I understand what you're saying about unintended consequences, but...
Where I was heading was that is I think we should, perhaps at an appropriate moment, start looking at what has happened as a result of some of the code changes that have been recently. It seems like a...this seems like a...
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying that's a completely separate part of the conversation to be had elsewhere. Thank you.
Since we're not talking about the building.
Okay, what else? That was fun. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda.
Wait, if I may?
Please, go ahead.
Procedurally, does the board feel that it's prepared to schedule this for a public hearing? Karen's shaking, no.
Karen thinks no. Anyone else? Kevin thinks no.
I think it would be doing yourself a disservice.
Well, I don't know. Let's think about it. They could benefit from public input?
Needs to be advanced a little more.
I'm not convinced that it's even, you know, satisfied some of the comments from our planning consultant. Right, hasn't met your two points yet. Do we...
I guess we will leave that. That's a building just...
Yeah, how do we get to that?
Building inspector, yeah.
Yeah, the issues that Natalie raised in your memo...sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, the two points that were brought up earlier.
Yep, so ultimately, that's a building inspector determination as to whether or not a variance is needed from those two provisions. So we'll know for the next meeting. What you may wanna do is understand whether variance is needed for that before scheduling a public hearing, because you may wanna refer the application to the zoning board for that variance if once needed before.
I think that's as good a reason as any.
But if I may, just because we have another application that may have benefited from having been to the planning board first, but it didn't, it got variances first, we would want the planning board to be in better position for the site plan before ever going to zoning board.
Yeah.
We'd want this project to be something you'd all consider for getting relief and then needing to go back to ping pong and have more hearings.
I have a procedural question about...I thought that we had to deny something in order for it to go to the zoning of Cliff's Board?
No. No. Two admission tickets to the zoning board. A denial letter from the building inspector when a building permit is issued.
Okay.
When it doesn't involve a planning board application or a referral from the planning board.
Oh, okay.
When there's obviously a known need for variance.
When there's a known need for variance, yes.
You could also seek, since I'm part of the CLE tonight, you could also seek, if the building inspector made an interpretation, we could seek an interpretation in any alternative of variance. So we could look to the zoning board to reinterpret an interpretation, which would most likely be the relief sought, and then pursue the variance if they upheld that determination.
Do we memorialize these interpretations so that they can be referenced later?
Yes, you'll see one in, what, the last application, 300 Main. There was a letter from Brian.
For the metal material.
For the individual application or in...for other people to reference?
On the material, on the...for 300 Main, on the...
Right.
Previously on the agenda, there was a determination by Brian about the acceptability of a certain type of material. That determination was in a letter that's part of the record.
Is it only applicable to that application, or does it have...
So if another application were to come forward with that same material, his determination...
His determination would apply.
It's a precedential...
Right, but what I'm saying is, like, I can reference that in the city. I know that I can...memoranda, building department memorandums, I can look through. It's a voluminous thing. It's something only certain people can interpret or know, get access to. But I don't know if there was a record like that here. It's just a procedural thing. Yeah, something where you could reference the history of... Because there's probably five people that have been involved with some of these.
They're all...they're all in his bottom drawer.
We submit them...when we get determinations, we include them in our packages so they become part of the record. So when this is...when we submit...we'll have to now submit to Brian specifically just articulating our position, and then Brian will make a determination on that, and then that determination gets included in the record. If it's in favor, then we proceed as proceeding. Or if it needs a variance, then it's presented as Brian made a determination. We now need a variance.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, so let's get back to a public hearing. I personally don't see any harm or undue advantage, so I'm inclined to...
I thought we wanted a determination from Brian first.
That would be my recommendation, so you know whether they're gonna need to somehow incorporate a sidewalk.
Yeah, well, you're right. It could significantly impact...
Or they're gonna get the variance for it.
All right, so let's...we'll wait till next month.
We're gonna hold off?
Yes.
All right, so Brian...
You've heard from the board.
We'll get you. Great.
Okay. So we're gonna go to the next item on the agenda, number six. We're now really cruising through this. Continued review of application for site plan approval. Residential four-unit multifamily dwelling, 14th North Cedar Street. Okay. Are there any other lawyers in town?
I can have my colleague present it. Do you wanna switch it up?
No.
So I'll keep it quick, 'cause I talk really fast. Next time around, you may have the benefit of multiple hats worn by Cutty and Fader. For the record, Taylor Palmer with Cutty and Fader. On behalf of the applicant, Zavon Perucci Realty LLC. Tonight, I am joined by my colleague Jessica Zalen, as well as the project architect, RA Siegel, and our traffic consultant, Rich DeAndrea, and our project engineer, the owner and applicant himself, Angela Perucci. Not Hudson-Lindsey. As the chairman mentioned, we are before you this evening in connection with our continued review of the applicant's proposal to construct two, a two-story, four-unit multifamily dwelling at the property along with associated site improvements and parking area. Before I turn it over to RA to walk through the updated site plan renderings, since it has been a few months we were last before you in May, we did wanna bring everybody up to speed. During our extra time off from the board, the applicant refined our building configuration to move away from the modular design and to create an L-shaped building, an RA-designed building, that incorporates the L-shaped design and horizontal siding in place of the vertical board and batten previously shown. So again, we moved away from the modular to try and address those considerations. Some of the additional plan updates here are the ingress and egress to the property, which has been reconfigured. I know Natalie had some comments on that. I think we'll address that quickly tonight, 'cause I think that's one we can pretty regularly address. We'll identify why, well, I'll just say it now. We had organized the entrance and exit, because the way we configured it was to avoid vehicles potentially turning onto the one-way, going in the wrong direction. So that's why we had vehicles leaving the other way. But we certainly have no objection to however the board directs traffic through the site. The main entrance of the building had been updated and shifted east towards the corner of the building, proximate to North Cedar and Church. And the access ramps for the building have been condensed and relocated to the area next to the main entrance. Due to the reconfiguration of the building, there is a slight building footprint increase, this time 125 square foot. If you're keeping track, that's 125 square feet. Previously proposed concrete, so I was gonna say the other one, was 84 square feet. Sidewalks to the rear of the building and the previously proposed curbing along the south of the property have been eliminated. The previously proposed pole-mounted and wall-mounted lighting fixtures have been replaced with new landscape lighting bollards and wall-mounted light fixtures. And additional lighting details have been incorporated into our plans. The additional and refined utility grading and drainage details for the project have been also added to the plans. And then we'll also be submitting additional landscaping once we confirm ingress and egress, and also because Deborah was on vacation. We did include a stormwater analysis in the submission. And lastly, but not leastly, we did provide our traffic and parking analysis assessment, sorry, from Colliers, which confirms that the project is not anticipated to result in significant adverse invasive traffic with the five off-street parking spaces that we're providing on the site for the project, which we submit is consistent with parking regulations. And of course, there also is off-street parking available within 300 feet to the property to accommodate the existing demand. I'm gonna go to, I think, Rich in this case, because I think Rich had the specifics of the ingress and egress, unless I've already kinda hit on it. Yeah, and then I'll have RA show you the REA building, not the modular building.
Thank you.
RA, do you do modular?
So I think Taylor already kinda touched on the parking end of it. For, again, similar to the last one, we have four units here. We anticipate there to be four spaces that we really need. We have five onsite. But we have done parking observations in this vicinity previously with another application. And there is sufficient public parking available if it ever was needed. So I think there's more than enough parking here. But again, we think we're gonna accommodate on our site as needed. As far as the ingress and egress, as it was laid out on the submission, it was entry off of North Cedar, exit to Church Street. North Cedar being...is a one-way going, I guess, northbound that would be. And then Church Street is a two-way street. I think Natalie's comment was to reverse it so that Church Street is two...becomes two-way and North Cedar is the one-way...so that Church Street accesses the entry and North Cedar is the exit. I...my personal opinion is that does make sense. It actually keeps traffic away from Main Street also, so I think that's probably the better way to go, and I think we can make that change.
You gotta come from Main Street, though, to get in, right?
The way it is right now.
Right now, you have no choice. You would have to come in from Main Street. If we reverse it, you wouldn't have to come from Main Street.
Oh, if you reversed.
Because you'd be able to come in off of Church Street.
Off of Church, yeah, 'cause if you came off of Church, you'd have to go all the way.
People may...somebody may still come from Main Street, but you wouldn't have to come from Main Street.
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah.
So you're gonna accommodate that recommendation, yeah? Okay.
And you said four spots?
We have five spots onsite. We're saying we need four as at...
Oh, good, so you have an extra one for that Main Street application.
Go across it. Church and Cedar get really tight with their cars. And Church is small, and you got a lot of school traffic in there constantly. I mean, that's my way I bring my kid to school. Right past that church, right on Cedar, and it's a pain in the ass in the morning.
Language wins.
What's that? Oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman. It's a pain in the butt. You strike that from the record.
You got that, Mercedes?
Sorry.
Quite all right. I think I've actually said worse in meetings, so...
I think you did earlier tonight.
My apologies. It's the children at home.
Nothing.
What else you got?
So once again, I think Taylor covered most of the highlights. You know, so the L-shaped building gets rid of that, you know, bar shape that we had before. So it almost automatically gets it more in scale with the residential projects in the neighborhood. We submitted elevations. Don't look at these images, 'cause they're not here.
Very rise.
They will be submitted next time, but it got developed further, but we'll submit them next time. I just had them here.
Okay.
It just keeps going, doing that.
And you're looking.
I know. You got me. Is that in Montana?
But, no, I just wanted, I just wanted to give you a quick flavor of the 3D version of it, but it, it'll be, you know, more fully rendered for the next submit. That's where we are.
Make sure there's a lot of shadow across the facade so that it obscures much of the details.
Everything should be at twilight, or maybe like a quarter moon.
Adams Family.
I want a midnight view, please.
Twilight vibe.
So much drama.
I will say this, regardless of what I'm supposed to be looking at at any given moment, I really appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with us in evolving this in a way that's very positive. So I just needed to make sure that I acknowledged that.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Thank you. So, any questions or comments of the applicant? Although we haven't gone to consultants yet, I'm sort of losing track now. Let's start with John Russo.
Thank you, sir.
Microphone, please.
Thank you, sir. They're doing an underground stormwater facility to handle the stormwater from the site. With that, they'll need to submit a stormwater maintenance and easement agreement. We backed up, asked for some cleanup on the plans with regards to some of the details, with regards to the utilities and the roadway, the storm drainage they're conveying, that needs to be, the pipe size needs to be increased to minimum of 15-inch cords with the regulations. And then we've just asked for some additional information to be provided with regards to the drainage system itself.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that stuff?
Absolutely.
All good?
I have one question.
Yep.
I noticed one of the inlet is 24 feet wide, and the exit is 15. Can that be made narrower, the inlet? And would be a good idea.
Well, it's being reversed, so now it would be the outlet, based upon this conversation we had earlier. But yes, that could be necked down.
Just because the parking is so tight, is wider curb cuts reduce the amount of parking, right?
It, it can be reduced down. The width of it is, can be reduced down, so.
Can the whole asphalt area be reduced down? There's like a lot, like, it doesn't need to be so close to the property line? I know it's, there's a curve, but there's just...
We'll work with Deborah when, to sort of integrate that.
Well, basically, you need a certain aisle with the back of vehicle out of a stall.
Do you need that?
Yeah, but you could do like, I mean, especially the one that's closest to the existing storage structure. Like, that's almost two backouts.
Is that paving material that water goes through, is that legit?
Permeable pavement?
Yeah.
Yes, it's legit. DOT has it. It's out there.
Depends on who you ask. Some communities call it not permeable, even though it's literally in the word.
Yeah, it clogs up over time if you don't maintain it. I mean, they are handling their stormwater on site.
I got it, okay. I was just curious. Okay, Ms. Quinn.
So the traffic circulation got addressed. Elevations, I, I didn't know if we wanted to do this as ARB or if this will stay in front of the boards, just noting that. The lighting plan, although I'm looking, it looks like, based on your lighting plan, it looks like you have spillover onto 10 North Cedar. But now I'm looking, is it not picking up the fence that's there? Don't you have a fence? It's not picking up the fence, so maybe just modify those isolines so they're not going over, because I realize you have a fence, and now that these are bollards, you're gonna be below that. So I saw that as I was looking back at this. A landscaping schedule, just so we know what plants these symbols represent would be helpful. Street trees, and this is kind of picking up from one of, one of John Clark's old comments that I know, there's existing trees on site. One of them looks in really bad shape, but the other ones are there. They're in proximity to where you're putting the sidewalk or where you're putting landscaping. There is no replacement for a mature tree in terms of like how long it takes these to come back. So I just wanted to talk about that, if any of those can be retained, or is there a replanting aspect? It looks like there's a lot of low shrubs, and maybe this will come out once we have the schedule about what's being proposed. But some aspect of street tree that, now that you're providing these nice sidewalks, some shading of those would be appropriate. And then just a correction, the building height is 31.7 feet, right? So just, it was, some places it was 31, some places it was 31.7, so just clean that up. And that was it for my comments.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Questions or comments by the board?
What's our feeling on ARB? Do we want to just?
Just keep it here.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay. When, when we, when we know what we're looking at, then we'll pick this back up. Which version?
If I may. No, go ahead.
Sorry?
Beam it to you, go. That didn't work.
Yeah, notice public hearing?
Yeah, that's the one.
Yep, I thought so. Good job. It's what happens when you have the same exact attorney for every single application.
Wait till you see the next guy.
So we can discuss, what was that? I know. I think it's a, it's a, you've got the full house on this. No, there was one new one.
I didn't, no. Mr. Freeman had that one.
We can discuss or otherwise make a motion to notice public hearing for next month.
Motion to notice public hearing for next month.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by everybody. Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The only other request they might have on this one is whether you might consider authorizing preparation of a draft negative declaration, but if the board is...
Yeah, we could, we could do it. Any thoughts on the matter, board?
What are we talking about?
Just authorizing Jennifer's office to generate a draft resolution doesn't necessarily mean we have to adopt it, but it's available should we be able to next month. So.
Motion to draft.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by James, all in favor?
Aye.
Len.
Len. Okay. Last item on the agenda.
What do we got?
Review of application for site plan approval. Residential convert existing single-family residence to a two-family residence, 6 Cliff Street.
I'm a maniac, man. All right. For the record, Taylor Palmer with Law Firm of Cutty and Fader. On behalf of the applicant, saving the best for last. As the chairman mentioned, we are before you this evening for our review of a new application for site plan, although it was mentioned in the prior application, for the applicant's proposed conversion of an existing single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. Before I turn over to R.A. to walk you through that plan, I did want to give you a quick background about the proposal and a quick overview of the property. As is more fully detailed in our planning board application submission dated June 24, the applicant is proposing to convert the existing residential building on the property into a two-family house. As I mentioned, this application did go to the zoning board first, and then received variance relief, and then came to you, the planning board, based on a determination made by the building inspector about two families and additions thereto, rather than a single family, which would not necessitate a, a review by your board. With that said, the property on, is located on the east side of Cliff Street.
Hang on, go back.
Yep.
What's your variance?
Our variance in this case was, was a setback. Yeah, we have, we have a couple, so. Yeah, so the specifics that we have are, yeah, sorry, we'll go through the specifics. So there were, we have a minimum, it was a minimum lot area for dwelling in it because of the, this and 8 Cliff Street are both undersized, the lots, for two-family. 8 Cliff Street is an existing two-family. This is a, this was an illegal two-family. It had, it had two kitchens, but it's, it's, the lot itself is undersized. So it needed a minimum lot area. It needed the rear yard setback, which is to that, the project that was just before you for the Barishes. And then you had a maximum lot coverage for the building, so that, those were all reviewed and approved by the zoning board.
They approved all three of them?
They approved all three, and the applicant then went to apply for a building permit and was told, "Thank you, but come see you." So here we are.
They're just handing out variances left and right?
Well, these were not, I mean, this is, this, this is a really, I mean, this is a minor addition to an existing structure. It already operated with two kitchens. It was really making a better condition for the site, as we'll show you visually. So too will be the aesthetic additions and modifications, you know, fully bricking the building, but I'll get to that quickly, understanding where we are. Context, the property is in the T District, so we're not, we're out of the CMS this time, although we're right next to it. We're immediately adjacent to the city's parking lot. We're now sort of boxing in from the last application that we're talking about in relation to that, in the CMS and HDLO. So the abutting property, as I mentioned, is also in the T District, and that is a two-family residence. The property to the north contains Cliff Street's, city's Cliff Street lot, which is in the HDLO. And then the property to the east of us is also classified in the CMS and HDLO. And of course, as we mentioned, that was the 193, 195 application. Two-family use is a permitted use as of right in the T District, but because we have the addition, we're here before you for the planning board review. As I mentioned, it had two kitchens. So the applicant now is adding the addition to manage the, the build out there. R.A.'s gonna walk through what this building will be comprised of. The addition we're talking about is really located in the rear of the building, not in, so it would be minimally visible from the street. The applicant is also proposing to reconfigure the first floor of the building to convert that into an independent dwelling unit to install a partial new deck on the first floor level and to install a staircase at the second floor level, connecting a proposed roof, deck atop the building itself. The applicant is also proposing certain repairs, as I mentioned, to the building to remedy deteriorator conditions and to enhance the overall appearance. The replacement of the siding on the building and the new addition will be brick. The doors in the building will be replaced with gray doors, and new gray doors will be used on the addition in place of the existing white siding. New decking materials will also be installed to repair the existing wood porch. At the front of the residence, steel guardrails will replace the wood rails, and will also be used for the roof deck. Wall sconces will be installed on the building. New native trees and shrubs will be planted. There are no changes proposed to our site driveways. And with that, I'll have R.A. just touch on the adjustments. But again, this is here for a minor addition. The use is permitted, so the specific reason why we're here is because of the addition.
This one? Oh, Jesus Christ.
Apart from the several renderings that you haven't seen. Basically, Taylor summarized it. So each floor is gonna be its own apartment. They, they each have access to an exterior area. We, we are gonna be adding a trash enclosure that'll be shared and screened by landscaping, and we'll get that in for the next one. But, but essentially, they're changing the existing siding to all brick and putting new aluminum clad windows in.
What's the, what's the cornice material?
The material?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll use the AZAC.
Yeah, okay. I'd love to see a detail of the profile. The cornice on the main body fronting Cliff Street just looks a little out of proportion. Scale-wise, it's anemic.
Yeah, we can, we can look at that. I mean, we're, we're kind of working with what's there and just re-cladding, but we, we can look at filling that in a little bit.
Yeah. What do you mean, we, when, working with, that's the existing cornice?
Yeah.
That's not original to the building, is it?
Well, I, I don't know what was, but it may have been one of those ones where they wrapped what was there.
Oh.
There's a lot of that in the neighborhood.
So you, you don't know exactly what the existing looks like?
Well, I mean, it looks like, I mean, this is what you see now, but there may be something...
Wait, you're saving a cornice on this?
No, I mean, we're just trying to work what's there.
There's nothing there.
Is it a rain gutter? Is there a rain gutter on it?
You can picture this thing?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's right there. It's either an architectural detail, or it's a gutter.
Well, so, yeah, let's...
I mean, there, there are basic ideas to re-clad it, but, but, you know, I mean, the, the application is really about the addition.
Yeah, but we're here, I'm curious about how you're, you know, that's, we're asking how you're gonna, and it helps you actually finalize the design. Is there a gutter? Is it a hidden gutter? What is it, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The square?
Just provide a little bit more info for us in the next review.
So the main entrance to the first floor unit is on the south side, and the main entrance to the second floor is the front, the existing kind of front door.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay. Did we already do consultants?
No.
No, I don't think so, sorry. I'm starting to lose it. Witching hour's passed. Do you want to go first, John?
Sure. So the applicant will need to conduct an inflown infiltration study for the site, an I&amp;I study, so that has to be done. And that's all we had at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Quinn.
Yep, my two comments are mine are two. I didn't see a refuse location noted on the plan, so just wondering where that is. And then screening should be indicated for that. And then, two parking spaces provided. I'm assuming you're gonna use the existing driveway, but I just, if this could be noted where those are intended to be on the plan.
No problem. And it will be exterior, but R.A. will put it on the plan, the refuse container.
It will be.
The refuse will be exterior. He'll put it on the plan.
Okay, okay. I didn't know, there's that back outbuilding, that back line. I didn't know if it was in there.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, good guidance would be to, you know, be respectful of your neighbors and not get it right up against the property line.
Yeah, I hear those where your neighbors are gonna be really close to that property line.
They might be, might be doing a three-story building. They could have four stories. At least they didn't go for four.
Right underneath those balconies.
They heard Stash Stankowski, "No more four."
At least you'd be looking at each other from the rooftops.
Haven't seen him in a while.
What's the, the condition of the garage? Is that also being refurbished, or does it need it? Or is it just, just curious?
Yeah, there was no changes proposed there.
This is gonna be, this is gonna be thin brick on the outside?
Yeah.
Is there some sort of, have you figured out how you're gonna return it in the windows and lintels? Or is that gonna be like AZAC trim? Was it, is the brick gonna, are you gonna see the quarter inch thickness of the brick? How are we gonna look at, how, how's that gonna resolve? I mean, that's partly practical and partly material.
I would return it to the windows, because otherwise you'd have that issue unless we changed the detail of the framing.
Right, and it's also waterproofing issue, which I'm sure you know, you've experienced all this, right?
Yeah.
You know, Ipe is an endangered species.
Ipe?
Ipe.
Ipe wood?
Is it?
It's not preferred. I don't think it's endangered.
No, it's not, okay.
It's not... People don't want you to use tropical woods at all, which is terrible, because Ipe is beautiful.
It is. So is bubinga. Okay, so what else?
Type 2 action, not subject to secret.
Right. Yep.
Ipe's for the...
We can talk about noticing public hearing for next month, if that was what was next on your mind, right? So, let's do that. Any discussion on the matter or otherwise a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
By Karen, second by James. All in favor?
Aye.
What else?
That's it.
Okay.
Does anybody else need a turn?
What are you bored tonight?
Wow. Yeah, maybe we'll require attorneys for certificate of appropriateness. All right, so, we're going to go to architectural review. We have three items. First one on the agenda is 39 Townsend. Is this the last of your buildings, sir? This is the last one?
Hold on. Get out of here. Good for you. Is that a client request?
It's like this one.
Good move.
Yeah. Yeah, right? Got to ask, because we're talking about it here. Good night, all. Safe home. The black-and-white effect.
It's intense.
How married to that are you?
You have another building...
Well...
This is a situation where you've actually created your own context of similar and dissimilar.
He has.
And then you broke your own law.
Right, well, you have other... You have other buildings, I guess, where it's... The dark and light colors are used, but not... Sort of like keeping the dark color below the belt line on the front.
It's pretty extreme, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, I know that some of the houses have the side is all... You know, the full side is dark, but...
Is the under the porch dark, too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then around the corner, it's not? Yeah, you need to work on that.
Yeah, it's pretty stark.
It just looks like... There's another one that...
The trim, right? The contrast with the trim. It's like really weird.
That's what seems troubling to me is the, you know, is having it the whole thing. I don't know why.
And it's very dissimilar from a lot of the other ones you've done, all of which had tones or various shades of things.
Yeah, do you see this one that you already built? Even if you went in that direction, that'd be a little bit more... Because there's just a ton of black on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just...
Stop from looking at two different buildings.
Great.
Yeah, if you're inclined, we would be, I think, appreciative.
Did we have a thing with the garage door on the front of that? Or is that not?
I don't like it. I don't like it as a plan.
Well, you already did it.
It's... Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter what I like at this point.
So, that's on... Yeah. Yeah, that's my only comment. I mean, you've already built one of these, so build it... I mean, build it a little bit more like this one with some more consistency, because just the dark, dark material on this entire mass is really oppressive.
Is that the same thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would go a little...
Yeah, it's just the top of that.
Just take the... You've got... Take the white around, just like you did the gray here, okay? So, do you have that modification noted? So, how do we word this? The...
Second story of the garage should be white.
Yeah. Well said.
Just going to change the color scheme. Just going to change the color scheme to be more similar to lot four, so the second story of the garage will be white instead of black.
Okay, so the second story of the garage will be white?
Yep. Okay, so with that modification, I will accept a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by James.
Seconded.
Second by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're not ever going to see you again? Yeah, just come by.
Oh, yeah. Now that you remind us, that sounds pretty horrible.
Okay, so, next item, certificate of appropriateness, Talbot Avenue, new single-family house.
Good night, thank you.
Good luck. Anyone here for Talbot?
What's next here? Talbot.
Where's Talbot off of Washington?
This is John Moss. Yeah, I got to say, you set the bar high for submissions.
Oh, boy, yeah. Look at you.
Or at least comprehensive submissions.
Where is Talbot?
We don't need the structural set for planning.
Question mark Talbot Street?
Yeah, you got your comm check and everything in here. This is great. Or res check, I should say.
Do a little res check.
Nice details.
So, Talbot, Talbot, Talbot.
Thoughts, Board?
I just want to see where it's located.
Can I... I lived in a house like this in 1972, I think, in Seattle.
Yeah, it's a bit of a throwback.
It's... I think you need to lean into the 70s aspect of this and make sure that your details are completely, like, rockabilly original, you know?
Which aspects are... Are you talking about this?
I don't know. Well...
The trademark is sticking out part?
Doesn't look like anything.
No, 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 actually, I don't... I can't... Actually, I think you're spot on. It's hard to make a... It's hard to tell you that this is the wrong thing to do for a couple of reasons, although that would be... I don't mind that being diversity of residential styles in certain neighborhoods, but it's subjective, and it kind of comes as a case-by-case basis. This neighborhood isn't a series of Victorians like High Street and other things, right?
What's it... What are the adjacent street numbers? Like, you know, or even just one?
And then the next one is the corner on 90.
One lot off the corner of 90?
We've had a... We've had kind of a... A couple of lessons learned lately with, you know, infill construction in historic neighborhoods where...
Oh.
Well, more older buildings, right, like Spring Valley. There were a couple of really contemporary, like, much more not throwback, not what contemporary used to be, but what contemporary is now.
So, you have kind of a ranch across the street?
Is that empty lot on Talbot?
There's a ranch across the street. There's a ranch next to me.
Yeah, and then on the corner, you have that big white Borden-Batten home.
Right.
That's on the corner, so it's a...
And you're the awesome contractor. Oh, really? And did you request this sort of vibe or whatever?
Yes.
You work with John on it?
I built a house in Rogers that was kind of similar, but I wanted to bring in like the old wooden aspect, make it maybe warmer, make it lighter.
Yeah.
How does the setback on the lot compare to the surrounding homes?
It's hard to tell.
Is it that?
No.
Because the only reason I say that is because when it's... When you have a... I have just seen a couple of times where you have a very modern construction and it's closer to the road than the surrounding homes, the really big planes and the modern seem to like kind of chop at the...
I don't think it's closer. It's set at the same level as the housing.
I appreciate you answering, since it's not under periphery, but that sounds good to me.
But I don't think it'd be out of line to ask for site plans that showed a certain range of the adjacent building locations, as, you know...
Oh, no, it's here.
So that we can judge that, because that was one of the things that people have reacted really strongly to, if this sort of out... Unique or distinctive residential styles are also like not in line with the other buildings, right?
Ah, that's right.
John brought this up when we were doing the...
No, no, and I don't think it's out of line. I'm just bringing it up as a general thing for us to... Because I'm trying to... We haven't made any much progress on it, but I'd like to...
It's short end to Talbot, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and you're within... You're not... You're within your setbacks. I'm just curious, the materials. It looks like you're going with the natural wood.
Is the black... In the rendering, the black looks flat, but is that...
It's... I'm thinking about the pre-made hardwood, the Borden-Batten pattern.
Okay, and then the wood, then on the drawings, the line drawings, it looks like wood siding.
Or T-111, right? Remember that?
Well, it looks like wood.
Don't do T-111.
You won't be able to tell by the look.
So, is it going to be panels of hardy board or plank?
They come... They come in these... The whole thing comes pre-made and pre-painted. It basically used to be hardy board with a board and baton.
But it looks like it's got a Borden-Batten though?
Yeah. He's got it all detailed, actually. And there's a space between the sheathing and the siding and the sheathing.
I'm just trying to figure out the material, because in the line drawing, it looks like vertical wood siding and in the rendering...
It's all flat.
It's flat.
More vertical wood siding. Right? More vertical.
Right, that looks... Yeah, that's vertical, but...
That's flat.
That's flat. So, it's Borden-Batten?
Yeah.
That'll get...
Gotcha.
Painted black?
It comes... It's not black. It's very dark gray. It's a... And it comes in pre-painted. I don't know if the material is or...
Did anyone, when you submitted, although it's a very comprehensive submission, did anyone ask you to submit materials, colors? No? Okay. Any other thoughts?
That's cool.
Well, it's going to look great.
It's okay. So, motion.
Second.
Go ahead.
I'll second it.
You got to first it.
No, it sounded like you...
Oh, I thought you were saying... Okay, motion to approve.
No, it sounded like you had something you wanted to add.
No, I was just saying that it could be... It could be better, but everything could be. I think there's... We have no reason to deny it, you know?
Do you have some specific recommendations?
That's what happens when you get a bunch of architects on the table.
Oh, the one thing I wanted to say was, if there's a color that it comes pre-painted, I wouldn't use that. I would pick a color and...
He was going to go for charcoal, but he decided on anthracite.
Right, but I mean, whatever that means, you know? Unless you have a sample, you don't really know. I'm going to... I think we just are going to trust that you're going to be careful and considerate of your neighbors, right?
You're lucky, because normally we would send people back. So, we have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Kevin? Second?
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. If you do build anything else in Beacon, make sure you come back with material samples. Thank you.
I just have a question regarding this application.
And you are?
My name is Mike Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design. Nice to see you guys tonight. So, we have some engineering, drainage improvements, easements to be reviewed by the consultants. And I just want to know how that gets done. Do we go... Can we go through Brian's office? We increase the escrow, because escrow is, you know, set at a pretty low number for architectural review.
Yeah. I would imagine, yeah, Mercedes...
My understanding of that is that you're going to submit a building permit application and go from there.
Okay.
So, upon receipt in our office, this is what Jennifer explained to me, upon receipt, Brian will do that, and it will get forwarded to John, so appropriate. And then easements would be reviewed by Jennifer.
Jennifer and John, yeah.
Where's that?
But we need the building permit. We need everything submitted from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. All right, thanks. Next and last item on the architectural review, certificate of appropriateness, 39 Mountain Lane. Hello, Jan.
Hi, I'm Paula. I'm just... I wanted to make a color change because I felt it needed more warmth. I was getting a lot of feedback that it was a bit cold with the white and the wood.
Didn't you already build this?
No, that was Spring Valley. This is 39 Mountain. It's similar, but there's no much black. I brought these for you to see. It's just the wood and probably the softer gray.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, we're being given a choice.
Samples for all of us.
Yeah, well, I did, yeah. The nice thing about this, it's not hard even, like, it's actually negative, carbon negative, it's a recycle.
Yeah.
I like the lighter one.
I was going to say, I like the...
Paper.
Rock paper scissors.
I just spent seconds.
You like this one?
The softer one or the darker?
I like the softer one.
So, this is... Anyway, it's a sheathing? It's not a siding, right? This is just the sheathing? This... I'm just... I'm structurally, I don't mind the color, don't...
So, what's this?
I was just curious.
The... They have a vertical, the wood going vertically, and this sort of... This is a ship lock, actually, the wood, and then this would be like a...
Is this different than what we're seeing?
Well, it is.
That's the rear, isn't it?
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the back.
Is that... Gotcha.
And actually, this is a terrible location. This Borden-Batten is actually a bump-up. It doesn't look this long and where... See, I'll probably have to come back, because she's still working on this, but this...
What are you doing here?
Did you see it?
You just sat through an entire meeting. What in the world?
And we're not being mean about anything here. We're very...
Yeah, you got me on a grumpy night. So, what are we doing?
Color. This is just the color.
It's okay to change from white to gray.
What is this?
This was white when I first presented, and you accepted it, and we've decided that white looks too bland and mean and sad.
They want gray.
People were calling me and saying, "I'm not going to buy it if it's that bland. It looks like a warehouse."
I like this one better. This one better than that one.
Yes, yes.
Which one's that?
I got it to Mercedes too late, so I didn't want to... I couldn't present.